Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, June 20th, 2016 City Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and Kelly, you're up. You're the guy, yeah. We've got about an hour and a half that you can spend and just kind of talk to us about retail and what's going on and what you're seeing, and there'll be a lot of questions for you. And then Kelly, if you'll turn on your mic for us there. Oh, they got you.
Yeah, can you hear me okay now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Kelly Cofer with the Retail Coach, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and maybe help you with a little bit of retail experience of mine. I was just telling the mayor that I was able to get into town Saturday afternoon, so I have had a good opportunity to take a look at your community, segment you into what we call retail districts, as well as look at some of your development sites. So, I'm calling this a workshop because I want some, I want questions. I have been here long enough to where I have a good feel for your community and some of your development opportunities, as well as some of your redevelopment opportunities. So, that's why we wanted to call this a workshop. What I want to do is maybe talk to you about some retail trends that we're seeing across the country, and then I want to take that into maybe what your specific issues, as well as your opportunities are in Watertown. And again, I was able to visit with John and the mayor, gosh, it's been about a month ago, but for some reason, it seems like it was six months ago, in Las Vegas. And, you know, our company, The Retail Coach, is, we're a real estate advisory firm, and we're based in Tupelo, Mississippi, and we have an office in Houston and also an office in Austin, Texas. My background is in retail real estate. Out of college, I went to Texas A&amp;M University, and out of college, I moved to the Dallas, Texas, area, and I worked as a retail real estate broker. And what that means is, I represented retailers and restaurants in finding sites for them, for their new stores and new restaurants throughout the state of Texas. I did that for a number of years until one of my clients hired me to move into their office and handle the real estate site selection for a national retailer. That's what took me from Dallas to Mississippi, met a girl, married, child, and the rest is history, and I've been there probably 20-plus years. So, what we have done with The Retail Coach is, we've taken my experiences in working as a retail broker, but more importantly, working as a site selector in the corporate real estate department of a national retailer. When we look at municipalities, like I came in early and looked at Watertown, is I tend to look at it through the eyes of a retailer. What does a retailer see when they come into your market? Retailers are all about making money. You know, unlike industry that is certainly pays very, very close attention to your schools and a lot of different things, quality of life type issues that you guys really do have going for you here, retailers just want to make money. And, you know, the one thing unique about retailers is, they want to go into markets where their investment is going to be the safest and the most secure. And at The Retail Coach, we've worked in 30 states across the country and about 400 communities. So, I tend to take our experience level in a lot of those various areas, depending on where it is geographically, most of the issues that face municipalities are very similar. What we have seen post-recession is that there's very, very little speculative development that's taken place in the last eight years. And I think you could say that's the same situation that you're facing in Watertown. So, what, a lot of what we have going against us now is, retailers are interested in expanding, but a lot of markets, what I would consider Watertown as a middle market, not a large market, but a middle market, is the lack of product on the ground. So, if we're able to get interest from retailers and restaurants, where are we going to put them? There's no available lease space of size that would fit them. So, what they're going to do is, they're going to come in like Hobby Lobby, and they're going to build ground up, or we're going to have to identify developers to come in, identify property, and develop from the ground up. So, our practice has really shifted. We are retail recruiters, but what has shifted in the last eight or so years is, at the same time we're recruiting retail, we have to identify developers that are going to actually build a product. And I think that out on Highway 212, is that's what you're faced with right now, and we'll talk about that a bit later. But, from the standpoint of The Retail Coach, we've been in existence over 16 years. We've worked in, you know, well over 400 communities, and we do repeat business in 88% of our communities, our client communities. And so, that's a track record that we're proud of, and, you know, from a consulting standpoint, from an advisory standpoint, it's pretty simple. If you do what you say you're going to do, people are happy with you. So, taking that and moving it forward, you know, one of the things that we really, really believe in is that you have to have good community development before you can have good economic development. And I have to say, you know, there are some communities we work in that that is a huge challenge, that there's a lot of community development issues that they have to look at and they have to address before they're going to have that strong retail economic development. That's not the situation in your community. So, you know, you've got that going for you. As I said a little bit earlier, you know, it's really key to developers, as well as to retailers, that their investment is most secure. From a site selection standpoint, you're not competing with other communities in the state of South Dakota or North Dakota for stores. You're competing with stores your size across the country. That's why community development is so important. And one of the things that you really do have going for you is that community development aspect. You have a lot of different things that you can use in your sales pitch, so to speak, to the retail community, as well as the developer community. Two factors that we have really faced in really getting the attention of retailers for the last few years is, the dysfunction in Washington with our federal government really scares a lot of developers, as well as retailers, when they're talking about store expansion. You know, a lot of times, their plans change election to election, really an issue and has been historically. And as we all know, the encroachment of e-commerce is the absolute biggest problem that retailers face, not just national retailers, but also independent retailers as well, really putting a lot of pressure on independent mom-and-pop businesses, because people go to the internet to buy things. I mean, we're all guilty of it at some level. So, those two things are really, really putting a lot of pressure on retailers. What we're seeing is, you know, with roughly a compounded 10% increase per year, we're looking at well over $300 billion of online retail sales, and that has really scared a lot of the bricks-and-mortar retailers. You know, how are they going to cope with that? And, you know, a few things that they're doing, and one thing that they started doing a number of years ago, probably four to five years ago, is really looking internally at how they are building their structures. They're now going to smaller units, smaller footprints, which, you know, is less investment. So, what they're doing is, they're carrying those items that really fly off the shelf, so to speak, and then they're sending, for the bigger-ticket items, they're sending their customers online for next-day delivery. Amazon has really changed retailing and is continuing to change retail. We're seeing that developers, it's really having an impact on how developers are building their properties. They're having to take into consideration that Best Buy, you know, 10 years ago, was building 40,000 to 50,000 square-foot units, and these days, markets are building 25,000. You know, I know that you had an OfficeMax that was here in the mall and that closed, but, you know, the office supply stores, they're looking, really paring back their store sizes. Really universally, national brand retailers are really cutting the store size. They're having more of their goods on the sales floor, and they're having less of their things in the stockroom. So, that's one of the ways they're responding, and developers, as I've said, are changing the way that they're developing properties. No longer, you know, 15 to 20 years ago, everybody wanted a power center. That's where you've got large, big boxes for a half-mile down the road, you know, just one after the other. What we're seeing now is really communities looking for these lifestyle centers, if you've ever heard that term, lifestyle developments. And that's nothing more than recreating what you have as a huge asset in your community, and that's the Uptown Historic District. You know, that's what lifestyle centers do, is they sort of go in and try to replicate these downtown areas. So, that is another adjustment that the developer community is making. And, you know, and also, they're becoming destinations for greater lengths of time. They want shoppers to come early in the morning and leave late at night. So, they're including entertainment venues, a number of different things, in their properties to get them to stay there. And those are some of the things that we may talk about going forward with some of your property, your new development property and opportunities you have out on Highway 212. Another thing that we're seeing across the country, because there has been very, very little new development, is redevelopment, taking very, very well-located properties and redeveloping them, and turning them in from, you know, in our business, we may call an aging shopping center, a, you know, we may categorize them as A, B, or C. You know, they're taking B shopping centers, those middle-of-the-road, and they're turning them into A shopping centers. And, you know, we're seeing that quite often, and, you know, is there an opportunity in your market for something like this? Is the Watertown Mall, which is incredibly well-located, is there a longer-term opportunity to turn that into a, sort of a Phase II redeveloped asset? And, you know, in the mall, I was able to walk through on Saturday night and talk to some of the mall merchants, and, you know, it's, the ownership is being responsive to their needs, according to two or three that I spoke to. But again, it is an incredibly well-located piece of real estate. And then you ask yourself as a community leader, are we getting the most out of it? And certainly with some of the newer development opportunities you have, is it going to put pressure on an older mall? Those are conversations that certainly will need to be had at some point in time. But redevelopment in 2016 is much, much more prevalent than new development, just because financing is still tight in getting new projects off the ground. And, you know, 10 years ago, you may have, you know, developers may had to have had, you know, 15% to 20% of the shopping center pre-leased before they were able to get their financing in place. In 2016, that's 60% to 70-plus percent, that they have to have the leases in place before they're able to secure their financing. So, therefore, the redevelopment of good, strong locations is what we're seeing happen across the country.
Kelly, do you mind if anybody breaks in at any time and asks a question?
Oh, no, no, I absolutely encourage that.
Okay, very good.
Can I do that?
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions here. Earlier, you had mentioned that a number of the retailers either look to have site availability and then build up, or have buildings that are ready that can be modified to their use and then move in.
Yes, sir.
Is one preferred over the other generally, or is it a horse apiece?
Well, a lot of it does, deals with pricing, you know, what is the land availability and what is the price of the land? You know, many times, building from the ground up, if there's a market price on the land that's acceptable, is less costly than rebuilding or redeveloping an existing asset. So, I think, you know, always, the retailer had preferred to go into a new location than they had an existing property. But again, what has been the limiting factor on that is just being able to get the financing to do that. And again, if we're talking about more multi-tenant-type properties. For example, if you, if we could use Hobby Lobby as an example, and I could use others, is that for a retailer, like Hobby Lobby, or some of the other national brands that are what we would call a credit A tenant that has very, very good borrowing power, it's much cheaper for them to build their own building because money's so cheap. So, you know, that is what they're doing in many situations, you know? You can take that from a Hobby Lobby, or you can take that all the way down to an O'Reilly's Auto Parts, who, you know, 15 years ago, was having developers build buildings for them, and they were leasing them back. Now, money is so cheap, they're basically building their own products.
How critical is the time element? I mean, certainly, it takes longer to identify a site, get it ready, build, move in, than if you have a building ready to go in. So, typically speaking, how critical is the time element related to an expansion?
Yes, sir, that absolutely does come into play. If you've got an existing building and you've got to go in and retrofit an existing building, there is an advantage of that, because again, retailers look at the competitive nature of the business, you know, just using the auto parts as an example. I mean, you know, if O'Reilly's Auto Parts was a little bit concerned that AutoZone was going to come into the market really quick, they want to get open, get the traffic patterns down of the customers to their store as quickly as possible before a competitor would come and open. So, the timing issue is very, very important. Yes, sir, it's a good point.
I've got one last question regarding the last topic. You talked about redevelopment, and you specifically mentioned the malls. What is an example of a redevelopment of a mall? Is it just a facelift? What is it when you talk about that kind of redevelopment?
Really, really, the hottest redevelopment opportunities for malls, your mall was built in '77, I believe, is demalling, meaning that you're taking away the interior of the mall. Those are typically the problem areas. It's not the, you know, it's not the exterior, you know, entrances of the anchors that cause a problem, but it's really going in and converting it into a strip center. That's a very, very hot redevelopment process right now, because across the country, malls that were built in the '70s and '80s and even in the early '90s are having the same issues. You know, for example, you know, the anchor that you have in the mall that's on the backside, you know, it's really hard to get a shopper to come go on the backside of the mall. So, therefore, what you're doing is removing that risk by bringing all of the entrances to the front. That's what we're seeing happen. Rarely, rarely, other than just a very cosmetic facelift on the outside, do you see total mall redevelopments in this age? You know, one of the things that we've seen happen in some select markets is converting them into these lifestyle centers that I talk about, where you have, instead of having an enclosed shopping interior mall, it's open-air. They're converted to more open-air shopping. It's really a lot of pressure on a mall of that age to stay productive, because you're talking about, you know, having to pay for those interior spaces, which is not inexpensive, but also you're paying for their pro-rata share of HVAC, keeping the interior cooled or heated, certainly an issue here, as well as their pro-rata share of taxes in maintaining the common area. That's why you're seeing so many strip centers being developed, these lifestyle centers being developed, instead of malls, is because just the cost to operate inside the mall is becoming prohibitive. And, you know, from the standpoint of redevelopment taking place, and, you know, one of the potential exposures that Watertown has is because you've got so much new development opportunity on 212, is that it's going to put pressure, even more pressure on the mall. A lot of the developers who come in and they start looking very closely at some of your property, they're going to start having to come up with a tenant mix that they're going to be able to attract to their strip center. Where are they going to go first? They're going to go to existing properties in your market. Does not benefit you as a community just to move one around, but what it's going to do is maybe some of those national brands that are inside the mall now, Bed Bath Bodyworks, Claire's, you know, even Dunham's, that's an anchor, that's going to be a discussion that's going to be held with those level of tenants. So, redevelopment is really going to be an important factor, I believe, for consideration in the future with the mall. And again, I looked up and did some research on the company that owns it, and they have malls, you know, in multiple states and are great operators, from what I understand. But, you know, you're at the point where you're going to experience new development, and it's going to put pressure on a lot of existing developments, and I would assume that one of those is going to be, is going to be the mall. Yes, sir.
Would you comment on, I guess I'd call it, the changing role of the anchor tenant in a mall?
Well, again, my answer's going to sort of echo what I'd mentioned earlier, is, because both spouses work today, the desire to have to park in front, go through a common entrance and shop at the smaller retailers on the inside of a mall is just not as prevalent, because they don't have time to do that. People would rather go up, park at the front door, go in and shop, and come out. Just because somebody goes into JCPenney or to Dunham's doesn't mean that they're going to go shop the other end of the mall. They typically will come back out to their car, drive around there, and go into the entrance of the anchor tenant. Anchors, you know, for a mall that's built in 1977, that is the absolute lifeblood of the mall, is, you know, if, and again, we've worked in a number of communities that's lost an anchor tenant. And then what do you do with that? Because there's very few anchor-type retailers in 2016 that would go into a mall. JCPenney, many of them now are going into strip centers. They're taking a prominent position in a strip environment. Again, their rent is less. They don't have to pay their percentage share of those extra costs that sometime are more than what their annual rent is. So, they are absolutely, what drives an aging mall is anchor tenants. It's, you know, and again, I don't want to speak for the owners of the mall, but I know that they have to be in regular discussion with them, they have to make concessions to them, because they know if they were to lose an anchor, it really, really puts them in a bad, bad situation. Does that answer your question?
It does, but the anchor's always been the lifeblood of the mall. You've said that.
Yeah, the driver. It's the draw.
My impression was, coming into this meeting, it almost plays a less of a role, because people, it isn't drawing people through the rest of the building.
Yes, sir, that is absolutely the case, is, you know, and that's why so many of the retailers want these exterior entrances in the mall. In my hometown, we added Barnes &amp; Noble to the mall, and they absolutely wanted an exterior entrance. They would not go inside the mall. They had to have an exterior entrance. I was quite shocked at your Dunham's. I walked through their store, that you have to go through the mall to get to their store. 9.9 out of 10 are going to demand that they have the outside entrance, because, again, they're looking to get people in their store, they're not as interested to see if they're going to go to Catherine's or to Claire's inside the mall. That's why this demalling is so popular now, because what it does, it turns every one of those anchors into strip center tenants with their exterior entrances.
Kelly, the demalling or the redevelopment, as you're referring to, I mean, is that feasible with a 40-year-old building? I mean, the way we're structured out there, I mean, or are we looking at tearing the whole thing down and starting over with something else out there?
Well, you know, at this point, there is, you know, a financial analysis that has to be done. You know, one of the things is, when you're doing that, you're going to lose your retail base anyway, you know? So, you've got, in that specific property, you've got a lot of depth that you have to deal with. The lot is very deep, and it's not as wide. So, you know, there very well could be configurations to better take advantage of the real estate dimensions than demalling. But clearly, across the country and our working, demalling is the most popular way of redeveloping aging malls. You know, again, in our work, when we run into a situation like this, one of the first groups we go to is, we want to find the motivation of the owners of the mall. You know, I did go on their website, you know, they have leasing information, they have brochures for leases, you know, and they have adequate signage in all the vacancies. So, I'm not here to say that they're not giving it the correct attention, but what is their motivation as owners? Could we put it in the hands of another owner that maybe has more invested in the Watertown market or South Dakota that could take it and be a little bit more creative than just trying to lease space to whoever comes up and wants to write them a check? You know, malls are really no different than strip centers. The anchors draw the people in, and that's why they're, you know, you put anchors on each end, is you want to promote cross-shopping. You know, if I'm going to Dunham's, I'm going to go wherever. But what we're seeing, and what we have seen over the last 10-plus years, is, because both spouses work, and they've got such a limited time to shop, they do not like having to park and maneuver through an enclosed mall to go shop somewhere. They'd much prefer, from a time standpoint, to go to a strip center environment.
So, are we, are you saying then that they would probably want to add outside entrances to the existing stores in the mall that we have now? Would they modify the common area then somehow? How would they?
Well, you know, some malls convert to alternative uses other than retail on the inside, that's an option. Many are converted to uses totally other than retail, you know, taking advantage of the structure itself. So, a lot of it, again, goes back to what the motivation of the ownership is, you know? It's, I can't speak for them, because I haven't spoken for, or spoken to them, but my experience in looking at a situation like you have in the Watertown Mall is, as the developers start developing new product, it's going to put even more pressure on the mall to up their game, to be able to compete. Or they stand the risk of losing their retail base that they have. You know, for instance, the department store that's there, they put a false facade on the front of the mall, so you can direct people in the front door to go to their anchor, because people aren't driving in the back. So, that's kind of a trick a lot of developers and a lot of retailers use, but again, it doesn't solve the issue of consumers in 2016 want to pull up to the front door, go in, get what they want, and jump back in the car and go back home.
Even in the northern climate, you know, that's kind of been, that's kind of the advantage to a mall up here, is that you could stay warm and visit a lot of spots.
Well, you know, and it's funny, because that question, I anticipated that question. And I was in Peoria, Illinois, and I travel a lot, and if you travel a lot, you're always going to forget something. Well, I forgot my shoes. So, I had a presentation the next morning. I had to go to a lifestyle center in Peoria in a driving snowstorm to buy a pair of shoes. I was the only person, other than people that worked there, that was shopping there. But the takeaway is, if you have to shop or you want to shop, that is, that's what you will do. I would look at your mall right now, and I look at the mix of retail that's on the inside. There's a lot, you do have national brands represented, you have many small, independent-type retailers in there, and you have a number of vacancies in there. If it were a, based on what I see happening with the ownership and their marketing efforts, if it were a, what we would call an A property, and it was in high demand, you would not have that mix of independence or those vacancies on the inside. I'm not saying that it is not, that it is a failing mall by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay, Kelly, let's.
Are we getting that clear? I want to make that clear.
Yeah, let's move on beyond the mall now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Perfect, thanks.
But to address the mall and the other properties in town, is, you still have retailers that are expanding. I mean, they are expanding in 2016, it's just you have to have the property type available for them. And what we are seeing as well is, as I mentioned, is many of these retailers are what we call brand-conscious. They want to go into a property that would support their brand or their image. If you don't have those level of properties in your market, then they will pass on it. And, you know, very well And I, you know, very well could be something that has happened in Watertown. You know, there are retailers that, you know, they may look at some of your existing properties in town, and, and the mall being one of them, and saying, that really doesn't meet our brand, doesn't meet our image that we're looking for. They want a higher-level product. So, you know, that, that is certainly something that's, that we see across the country. And again, there are brands because of e-commerce, and there are sectors because of e-commerce, that are just absolutely not expanding and they're closing stores. And those are the ones that you, you read about quite often. One of the, one of the things in markets like yours, middle markets, and we run into this quite often because we recruit retail for our clients, is that we find franchises interested in the market. And then they're going to ask the next question of, we don't have a franchisee, you know? Do you have anybody that you know that would be interested in our franchise? So we are seeing across the country growth, incredible growth with franchise development. You just listen to the radio or TV and you're going to see that. So that is an opportunity and will be an opportunity for you in Watertown, is the growth of some of these national and what we would call mid-tier franchises looking to expand in a market like yours. And we'll talk about that in, in just a minute. And one of the things that we typically do is we monitor the top fifty retail and restaurant and franchises because we routinely work with them in markets across the country. Another thing that we're seeing that really dovetails with that franchise growth is, you know, in many markets across the country, and I think you have a strong residential market here in, in Watertown, is, you know, housing appreciation. It frees up capital. It gives these interested franchise purchasers the, the confidence in the, in the capital to really invest into a franchise. And, and that's something that we're, we're trying to take advantage of in our client communities. One of the things that, yeah, I visited this morning in, in Mandan, North Dakota. And one of the things that we are introducing as a, sort of a new service is, is franchise seminars. When we find interested franchises in a market, we've got to go out and, you know, identify the entrepreneurs, the investors that would be interested in owning a franchise. Something that was very, very important to Mandan and something that we're probably going to roll out in the fall of, of this year. Downtowns, you know, we are big believers that you've got to have a healthy mix of independents and, and national brands. And so many communities across the country over the last ten to fifteen years have chased these big-box developments. In, in many communities at the expense of their downtowns. We spend a great deal of time redeveloping downtowns and working with the independent, independent business owners as well as, as just mentioned, the entrepreneurs. But, you know, again, you know, I spent a lot of time in your downtown over the last, you know, Saturday afternoon. And, you know, Kemp and, and, you know, Second, Second Avenue and I believe it's Collins, you know, to the north and south. You've got a very, you've got great infrastructure in place. County Fair, supermarket, you, you've got a great infrastructure in place in your downtown market. And again, the key is being able to get the consumers that come here out on, on Highway 212 to downtown. And fortunately for you, with First Avenue running beside the, the Hobby Lobby and then you've got Collins, you've got 81, and you've got 20, north and south, you've got great feeder roads into your downtown, which ultimately is going to give you that great circulation of traffic. And again, we are big believers that you've got to have a healthy mix of independents. Don't put all of your eggs in one basket, as happened historically in, in many communities across the country. Downtown attention and revitalization is, is absolutely key to you having that overall healthy community.
You know, Kelly, you mentioned the First Avenue coming through by the bank there and coming all the way uptown here or downtown. And we've got Two Way Street right to the, to the north of us here. But Kemp Avenue is one-way and First Avenue is one-way. What do you see as a trend on one-ways and two-ways streets? Which one?
Two-way, you know.
Yes.
Rarely am I seeing any, any longer, unless there is a, you know, divided median, do I see two-ways, two-way streets.
So you're more inclined to see one-ways?
Yes, sir. Now, I know you have another speaker coming after me that specifically deals with, with downtown revitalization. I'd be interested to know what they see. But rarely do I run across two-way streets. It's just too restrictive in, you know, in, in getting traffic in and out. You know, Kemp Avenue is, is, is obviously your, you know, main street downtown. And, you know, again, I felt like there was healthy retail off of Collins as well as Second. But, you know, I view, in, in our practice at The Retail Coach, we view a downtown, just like we view a strip center, is you've got to have anchors, you've got to have reason to pull them down. And then, then it's up to them to do the cross-shopping. And you've got to make it easier on them, either, you know, from a parking perspective, which, you know, I, I don't see that being an issue just in me being in town for a short amount of time.
And since you're being recorded, I, I just want you to know, we don't have a Collins, but we do have a Broadway and a Maple and a, and a First Ave, a couple of First Aves, just, just so you know. I think you're talking Broadway.
Yeah, very, yeah, maybe it is, maybe it is Broadway.
Sorry.
But, anyway.
I had to pick on you, you know, I was just.
You've got, you've got the health, healthy infrastructure in place. And again, you're benefiting from it, in my estimation, with a, with a really good, strong base of businesses, service businesses as well as retail.
I need, I want to ask a question real quick. I was looking ahead, which I used to get scolded for in college all the time. But anyway, we're talking here about some of the downtown revitalization. And two things kind of stuck out to me. One was the bullet point of lifestyle, lifestyle centers try to replicate downtowns. And I'm wondering about that versus actually creating the lifestyle centers downtown versus replicate or replace. And then the second thing was, I've been to communities, usually larger cities, Seattle, some of those, where the national brands have chosen to locate in a larger building in the downtown area. And I would like to know if you've seen that trend in any other mid, mid-market communities where, you know, you're talking about the smaller footprint or the smaller square foot store. And, you know, obviously, we are looking to increase that mix in our downtown.
Good, good question. I, I was in Seattle just a couple of months ago downtown. And, and really, you know, that can, you can bring that back here and get really excited about it. But, you know, the, the, the truth of the matter in a middle market like Watertown is your national, larger destination-type retailers, they're going to want to be out close to the interchange of 212 and, and the interstate. That, that is just a fact. That does not mean that you can't have destination retail downtown. I believe you do have a large furniture store that, that's downtown. I know you have some, some restaurants that, that have demand. But we are seeing a renewed interest in downtown from a lot of retail brands, but not so much from the anchor retailers. They're still going to be to where they can reach the most population base the easiest. And that's going to be just the quick on and off of I-29.
Can you just talk about the kinds of businesses? I can just give you an example of what I saw in Green Bay, Wisconsin. My family lives there. Walgreens had chosen to take some of the smaller, I called them pocket stores. I didn't know what else to call them.
That's, that's a good term.
Okay, because their downtown area had, did not have any pharmacies, as ours does not. The last one closed several years ago. And so what they did was, they created these small pocket stores with the basic essentials. And then their main larger stores dropped the prescriptions off into these neighborhood stores. And so I found that to be something that I could see working here. We already have a big Walgreens out on the 212 and 81. Are there any other stores of that nature or, you know, that have you have seen do that? I thought, thought that the Walgreens concept was fairly unique down there.
Right, right. Well, I have definitely seen it with, with the drug concepts. I've seen it with Best Buy. They've got a new sort of downtown pocket store concept called Best Buy Mobile, that they're doing things like that. It may be premature for me to tell you exactly what your opportunities are because those type things, they will depend on your daytime population downtown, your, your, your employee population that's going to be able to, to, to be walkable during the daytime to, to shop, as well as your residential support. Now, the residential that I've looked at immediately surrounding downtown appears to be very, very strong. So there's disposable income, that they may look at that from a convenience aspect. But those are potential opportunities that could be explored and probably should be explored. In addition to that, there are a lot of food concepts that are doing the same thing, that are looking to capture that daytime population, that worker population, and even those residential consumers that are in very close proximity. You know, you're not going to get someone who is shopping on the weekend from, from, you know, another community to come in here and go downtown to, to, to go to a Best Buy Mobile. But it's the, the convenience aspect that makes those, those types of pocket stores thrive. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
You know, if, if, if we take the trends that, that I talked about and then we start applying them to your community, that's what I want to do through this retail strategy. And this is some of the things that, that the mayor and John and I spoke about when we were in Las Vegas. You know, how could we help a community like yours? And, and one of the things is, we, you know, from, from our standpoint, is because we're ultimately going to be selling you to the retail community, the restaurant community, and the developer community, we've got to know how to position you. You know, we're big into understanding how to sell our clients. And, you know, yours is much easier than many of the communities your size. I mean, you have amenities in your market of communities two or three times of the population that you have. If it be, you know, the walking trails, if it be the, the Redland Arts Center, the, the zoo, you know, the aquatic park that was absolutely covered up, you know, Saturday afternoon. You have amenities of, you know, you've got the school. You've got amenities of communities of seventy-five to a hundred thousand people. That needs to be packaged and branded and sold to these various retailers, restaurants, and developers. And, you know, you're traveled, you understand it's a little bit unique for a sized community, you know, of your size to have those assets. I mean, I've did a little bit of research and, and certainly, the investment that you guys made over, you know, the last three years is absolutely key to differentiating Watertown from other communities your size across the country. Because that's truly what you've got to do. And then you've got to be able to package yourself and control that conversation. You have something to sell, but are you selling it? One of the things that I looked at on your website and also on a lot of national real estate websites that maybe has a lot of property, available properties listed, is I'm afraid you're not getting that message out nationally. I don't think you've got a lot of national exposure. That typically developers, real estate agents, and those things will do by listing some of their available properties to call somebody in, you know, Dallas or Cleveland to really take a good look at, at your community. And that's what you have to do. You have to market your community nationally. And, you know, we have an industry, uh, commercial database firm called Loot Net. And, you know, I think we may have talked about a property or two in Las Vegas. But I went on last week and you have zero property, retail properties, other than I believe there's a nursery up on the northwest side of town. I believe it's off of 20 that's, that's for sale. But every property that you have on Highway 212 needs to be on Loot Net because that is what these retailers go to. You need that national exposure to this retail community that I'm not sure you're getting now. You have the assets, the quality of life, life assets in your community to really take a step forward with a higher level of retail. And I do think that's what you're going to see over time out on, out on 212. Our approach in working with municipalities like yours is a team approach. Just like I came early to take a look around, I've got a really good understanding of your community. And that's what I do. I'm involved in every project. And there's a team approach as to what we do. Our process is kind of an A-to-Z process. We kind of, we call it Retail 360. It's from when we first come into a community, what we see, looking at competing communities. You know, how do you, how do you stack up against Sioux Falls, which is a hundred miles south of you, and Fargo, population, what, 125 or so? That's a hundred and forty miles north of you. Sort of controlling that conversation, the way I would sell you is, if you locate in Watertown, you're basically in the middle of two major markets. That's going to keep retail from going to Brookings because you can cover Brookings and other markets by locating in Watertown. So you've got to look at your competitive advantages. And that geographic location as compared to two major markets is, is, is to your advantage. You know, it's, it's, it's key for you. So we look at competing communities, how they relate to you. And my question in looking at, at Fargo and then looking at Sioux Falls is, what retailers are in those two communities that maybe could duplicate in Watertown in a market that maybe they're not covering right now? And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of community, a lot of retailers are looking at smaller footprints now. That opens markets like yours up to retailers that would not have looked at you before because they're coming in with smaller concepts. So knowing what's going on in your competing markets is, is really key. We call them competitive markets. You know, we've got to know how they, how they compete with you from an economic standpoint, all the way through what their retail bases are. You know, you, you know, you know who's in Brookings and you know who's in Aberdeen. You know, one of the things that we're huge on, and it's really the foundation of who you are as a community, is that retail trade area. You know, Aberdeen has a healthy mix of retail. We know who's in Brookings, we know who's in, in Fargo, and we know who's in Sioux Falls. So what are the boundaries of your trade area? We've got to know what retail is there before we can really determine that. And then we've got to know how you stack up from a demographic standpoint. Retailers want as many people in the retail trade area as possible. But it needs to be accurate because what they're looking for is disposable income. If they locate here, as I mentioned, they want the, the least risky locations they can get in communities, but they want as much disposable income as they can get. So you ultimately going to need to know how you stack up from a demographic and a disposable income standpoint with your competing communities. And that's certainly something that we have to fully understand before we can control this conversation in marketing you to, to the retail community. In your community, you've got two retail districts. And, and some call them sub-markets. You know, you've got the major Watertown market with, with all of this retail. But retailers that are typically going to be interested in Highway 212 are different than the ones that we were just talking about that may be interested in your, your uptown area. So we've got to segment and look at, what are your opportunities on Highway 212? You know, this is going to be those big regional retailers that will go there and have quick on-off access to, to the interstate. It's really key that, you know, we, we develop a strategy for 212 that's going to be totally unique than what's in your, your downtown district. And again, these are just loose boundaries that I, that I drew just to, to, to make this point, that, you know, the opportunities are different. You've got more national brand opportunity and regional brand opportunity out on 212. You've got the opportunity for some larger, more destination-oriented retailers, Gander Mountain, some of the others. Downtown, you have some national brands who may show interest. But you also, this is going to be the focus for independent business growth and some of the franchise growth that I'd mentioned earlier. So our approach is, in your situation, two strategies. One for downtown and then one for Highway 212. And I mentioned the determining the trade areas. That is absolutely key and the foundation. That is absolutely key and the foundation of any strategy. You want it as large as possible, but you better be able to back it up. What I have here is, it's called a heat map. And this is for Watertown Mall. The people who shop in Watertown Mall, who are on their cell phones while they shop are from this area. It's called mobile consumer data. We purchase this data. They can determine with just almost 100% accuracy, if they're shopping in the mall and they're on their cellular phone, we can tag where they live. And this is a heat map. This isn't the mall, I'm sorry. This is, I did it for Menards, Target, and Tractor Supply. And they would obviously do it for the mall, but these are the national brands that you have, Tractor Supply, Menards, and Target. So, if someone was on their phone while shopping in one of these stores, this is where they're coming from. You're getting people from Aberdeen, obviously Brookings, some from Sioux Falls. So, this is a regional trade area that you have. This is, you know, kind of zooming out even further to show you the, really, the influence of I-29 on your retail market. North and south, I-29 stretches your market to where you're actually getting people from Fargo that will exit off on 212, you know, shop at Target, Tractor Supply, or Menards, jump back on and go where they're going. Same way with Sioux Falls.
I just have a question. How is that mobile data relevant with portability of numbers?
That's a good question. This is, this map shows the absolute numbers of it. And we can show it for various time slots, if it be from morning shoppers, to lunch shoppers, to afternoon, to dinner shoppers. And we can also do it on the weekends as well. You are obviously a big weekend market, because you have more of a regional draw. But, yes...
But the point is to make the assumption that...
We're going to get you a mic, Craig. So, we're going to bring you a mic. And then you also have a question or a comment?
I moved here from Minneapolis area two and a half years ago. I kept my Minnesota number. So, do I show up as being a Minneapolis person when I use my phone in one of those places?
Probably, I would assume.
Absolutely, it would. But again, what you do...
I think that's your question, isn't it?
And the reason that you use this heat map is, you know, you're going to have people from all over the country that are here for the Redland Arts Center. So, you have to take into consideration where the largest concentration of these shoppers are from. And that's what we call a primary retail trade area. Those are the people that you're going to get on a weekly basis, and not those that are so remote that they could be coming here for Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever. But that's a very good question. Yes, sir.
That was my question, I guess, because I don't, with portability of cellphone numbers, it's challenging to say that those folks are from Sioux Falls or from Aberdeen. Most likely, they're Watertown residents who have numbers that they brought with them from those locations.
Absolutely.
Because in the Buxton data, it does not show the same kind of trends and profiles as it relates to where our shoppers come from.
Right.
So, that was my only point.
Well, for instance, Buxton uses drive times. And, you know, you can use a 45-minute drive time, you know, and still not reach all of the shoppers that you're actually getting. And again, this takes into consideration, just like in this map where I zoomed out, because I wanted it to really show and highlight what your question was. I mean, it shows that there are shoppers that are coming from, you know, Minneapolis here. But again, we don't use that in what we determine as your trade area. We are looking at the most conservative approach based on the frequency of the shopper. And we can determine the frequency of that shopper. So, this is what we would call a pin map that shows that. And what I have done is gone in, and this is how we do it, is really look at the density of location, and then we come in and we hand draw a trade area. And this is, you know, a very conservative view just by looking at those three retailers, the Menards, the Target, and the Tractor Supply, who all have regional draws. And this is the demographic profile of this boundary map. And I think this is a conservative view. And I would be interested to see, you know, kind of what your feedback is to this number, 125,000 people.
I think that's pretty close to what we've been putting out there. And I don't disagree when I look at this. And you go through Menards or Hy-Vee or the mall, you know, Sisitun, a lot of Brookings plates, there is tons of Minnesota plates. Yeah, we are, I truly believe we are a regional draw.
What we would do in a situation like yours is we would look at two things. We would look at that primary trade area, which is your day-in and day-out shopper. That's what the retailers base their decision on. But we can also look at a, what we call a secondary retail trade area, which is that larger area that people may come here once every two weeks, once every three weeks. If a retailer's on the fence about your community, many times a secondary retail trade area has been very, very beneficial for determining that. So, this is, you know, historically, you know, retailers will look at how many people live within a 10-mile radius. Well, in South Dakota, just like West Texas, people, if they want to shop, they've got to drive. And they will drive however far they have to to shop. So, this is what we have found is much more reliable than the radial as well as the drive time, because, again, this is a clearer picture. The key, as your question was, is making sure that you're looking at the most frequent shoppers for these retailers. It also has application of the tourism crowd as well. I mean, you know, you wanted to see how many people visit the water park on the weekend and find out where they live. You can do that. Probably not as an asset to the arts center, because people are in there looking at art and they're not on their cell phones. But this definitely, in many markets that we work in, has application for the tourism crowd. So, we're looking at roughly 125,000 people. This is part of your story. This is who you are. I would say that this is a conservative view of your retail trade area. If we talk to, you know, if we did the same profile for the mall, it's going, we're going to overlay the information to see if it actually broadens the trade area. Sisitun's 50 miles north, Brookings is roughly 50 miles south. And if you look at this, that's about what we have. About 50 miles north and 50 miles, 60 miles south. So, this is a fair representation of your trade area. And again, you want it to be as large as possible, but you also want it to be accurate, because you lose credibility quickly with the retailing community if you try to overinflate your retail trade area. So, this demographic profile, this disposable income that's depicted, this ethnicity profile that's represented here, all becomes who you are as a community. In the retail game, you sell yourself as a retail trade area population and not a community population. And that's something that we typically will work closely with the real estate community and the developer community to make sure everybody's operating off the same information. Very, very key. Has Buxton done a study for you in the past? So, you're familiar with the psychographic profiling of the trade area. That's where, you know, we find, and we use it mostly in working with independents. So, we remove the risk of, you know, them maybe carrying goods or services that absolutely don't fit the consumer. I was in a community a few weeks back having a workshop with downtown merchants. And this lady said her business was not doing well. And it was a gift shop, carrying really high-end gifts, candles, picture frames, those type things. Well, unfortunately, she was in an incredibly blue-collar area that had very, very limited disposable income. Long story short, she and her friends liked going to market to buy all of these things that they like. And they expected their consumers in their market to like them as well. But instead of paying $40 for a candle, they go to Walmart and buy 10 candles for $40. So, all of these things together remove the risk in making that decision to locate in a community. And again, making sure that their decision is the right decision. And in working with many independents, sometimes the best decision is them not opening the business. And that's part of providing them this information. And this is just, I won't go into it, but this is just the top segment in your community. Not the trade area, but your community. This is who you are, and this is what the retailers look at. Retailers use psychographics more in how they stock the shelves of their stores than using it in making the decision to locate in your community or not. Not all Walmarts are merchandised the same. They merchandise them to the lifestyles of the consumer.
Kelly, did I hear you say that you do utilize the Buxton information? Or are you independent totally of anything that we may have accumulated through Buxton?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know that you'd even had a relationship with them until he mentioned it. But no, we, our model is totally different than Buxton. We do the psychographic profiling, but we typically use it more with independent businesses. And Buxton, they don't work with the independent business person. So, one of the things that we do is, you know, we do this as a means of determining the retailers that fit your community, is we do a gap analysis. And I don't know if Buxton did one for you, but it's based on your trade area, not your community. You've got to determine what the potential purchasing power is of your trade area, and you've got to be able to determine what the opportunities are in your community. How many dollars are leaving your community in shoe store sales? Well, if you're losing, in this example, $18 million was leaving this community in Illinois, a suburb of Chicago. So, we used it to recruit Dick's, Champs, and MC Sports, and MC Sports located there. This alone is not going to make their decision for them. But this, again, is something that separates your community maybe from another community that's not doing this. This gets the attention of the retailer, where they know that they're coming in and there is an opportunity to gain business. You know, conversely, if you had 10 sporting goods stores in the market, then you wouldn't need an 11th. So, you only want to address those categories where you're losing dollars either south of you to Sioux Falls or north of you to Fargo. We've got to quantify that. And again, you know, once you determine this, the key for you, and I mentioned this earlier, is you've got to identify sites where these retailers can locate. And that is your challenge, but that's your opportunity. You know, you suffer from the lack of really nice, what we would call Class A or high-tier space. That's where the development recruitment comes in. You know, we talked about the mall a little bit earlier. You know, one of the things that we would do, and again, find out what their long-term strategic position is with their asset. Are they looking to do something with it? Are they looking to sell? If they would consider selling, can we find a buyer that would come in, redevelop, reposition it in the market? Which could be scrape and build new, or it could be taking an asset and demalling, or it could be just improving the facade. But making an investment in the property, which would benefit you as a community. This would be a major focus of ours, because it is one of those properties that can go either way at this point. And you need, as a community, need to be comfortable that the ownership, and again, you may know this information, that the ownership sees it as a long-term hold asset and that they're making the investment in it to position it long-term for the benefit of your community. Does that make sense?
Kelly, I got just a question. Me, I really wanted to point to anything else maybe, but you had said that if our needs are currently being met, then that isn't an area of focus. But if we have retailers here that every one of our mid-level communities also have, we're meeting more the needs of our local market. Whereas if we, even though we may have a need met, if we were to get something that made us stand out, now unfortunately, you may cannibalize something that's already here in doing that. You do increase your market area or your market size then by having that exception-type retailer here.
Absolutely. And that's the whole key through a targeted recruitment strategy, is to get those unique retailers that the other guys don't have, because all of a sudden, it takes that 125,000 people in your trade area, and it makes it 150, it makes it 160, whatever it ends up being. National retailers have requirements for new stores. Each of them, you know, Walmart Supercenter, they typically look for 60,000 to 75,000 people in a trade area before they will go there. Once you get over 100, that's breaking a threshold that's going to open you up to a higher level of retailer. And just because I know what Target looks for, and I look, and I know what, you know, Menards looks for, I would say your ultimate trade area is going to be closer to 150 than it is to 125. Because again, I know what they look for. So, that opens you up, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but it's a good question, to Kohl's, Pet's Mark, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. It opens you up to a higher tier of retailer than if it were 75,000 people. That's why you want to spend so much time nailing that trade area down, because that opens your horizons to that higher level of retailer. So, you know, we focus on existing properties that we feel like we can add value to. And if that's helping Lexington International lease existing properties or helping them determine what their long-term strategy is, we have to also look, and again, this is where your opportunities are, is we've got to look at what your new development opportunities are. You know, and some of the things that, you know, this is a couple of slides that I added for redevelopment. And these, I believe, were more downtown-oriented, where we go in and we can actually show an existing property of what, you know, not as necessarily as what they're today, but what can be. This is one that's really applicable to you. And I believe it's just in the northeast quadrant of 212 and 81. You've got a closed gas station there. And you see what, you know, the graphic can show maybe, you know, of what can be done with an asset like that. So, you know, from a creative standpoint, from a redevelopment standpoint. But, you know, in looking at your market, and again, I looked at this from my office and really feel good about it, but you, as a community, you need to know, and part of what we would do is a highest and best use analysis from Broadway all the way to the interstate. We need to know what's going on in that corridor. Are there properties in there that are not serving their highest and best use? Meaning, what's there today can be something different there tomorrow. It could be a well-located piece of property that's not generating any, anything positive for the community, if it be property tax increases, sales tax, whatever. So, I looked initially from Broadway to 29. After being here, I may extend it west a little bit, all the way to 81. Because 81, you know, you have Pizza Ranch up there, you've got the zoo, so you have some traffic going, you know, up north on 81. You've got, and again, we look very closely at automobile dealerships. You've got an automobile dealership that has a regional draw there. So, I may extend it west to 81 to really look at each property in that corridor in determining if there is any opportunities there for redevelopment or new development. And, you know, obviously, I used a dated aerial. Google has not updated their market, or their aerials. But you can see, I included as an opportunity the southwest corner of 212 and 5th Street. Well, once I got here, I see that it's already been developed. You've got, you know, a Taco Bell, a Hardee's, and, you know, a small strip center and a Pizza Hut. Those are the... Those are the type of opportunities I'm talking about when we're talking about highest and best use, looking at very well-located properties and being able to look at them from a retailer's perspective or a restorant's perspective. What can go there? You know, so I was, I was glad to see that, that that had happened. And, you know, this is, you know, again, I'm, I'm speaking conceptually here. I don't know the ownerships or, or things such as that, but I'm looking at well-located property that may be not serving their highest and best uses. So, you've got the Ford dealership, then you've got really well-located property at a signalized intersection that has, that is, is used for automobile sales, not new automobile sales. So, you know, looking at that, you know, between a new automobile dealership and a Target, to me, that is a prime development opportunity. You've got probably eighteen to twenty thousand cars passing there today. You're at a signalized intersection. Developers and retailers had preferred to be at a signalized intersection because it slows the traffic down. I look at things like this and go, is this really an opportunity for a future development? And I would say it, it most definitely is. And then this is something that we, we visited about in Las, Las Vegas is, you know, the, the Hobby Lobby locating there, opening in 2017. And then this large tract that is so large, it's going to be a mixed use, not all retail, but some level of mixed use. This is the future of, of the retail in Watertown. And, you know, I would say this, and, and I made a note of it. In a perfect world, and I know there's a number of different ownerships along, along Highway two twelve with, with some well-located property, is instead of them developing it all piecemeal, if, if there could be, for the larger tract, some type of conceptual idea or conceptual plan of how that property can be developed, it benefits you as a city in the long run. Because that way, everything is not developed piecemeal. They're not just selling the frontage off for fast food or a casual sit-down restaurant. They're looking at the total property of how we can maximize every square foot of it and not just jumping into the first sale. That's something that we do with ownerships, is we want to know what their motivation is. And if there's any type of conceptual, overall conceptual plan that can be considered for these large tracts of land, it benefits you. That way, you've got what we call plan development instead of piecemeal development. And again, you may be far ahead of me, but that is, that's something I wanted to mention. Because I see a lot of property in my travels that the property owner will get antsy, and somebody will come along and offer him a lot of, lot of money for just the corner without really thinking about what they're going to do with the rest of the property. Conceptually, they need to be thinking about what they're going to do with the total property and then work from there. That way, they maximize the property in the long run. And again, this is, I, I can see this has already happened. You know, my question was, could you take the case dealership and consolidate them with the property on the, on the other side of, of twenty-nine? Because again, Hobby Lobby and what happens, you know, adjacent, just west of Hobby Lobby is going to add a lot of value to that real estate. It's very well-located. So, those are the type things that we look for when we look for adding value to, to the real estate, is looking at the opportunities and the highest and best uses of the properties. And, and again, we are big into marketing. We are packaging and marketing for you. We talked about the brand. So, we do a number of different marketing packages and brand identification packages for our clients. This is one where we're recruiting a CVS Pharmacy in an Oklahoma community. We make everything very, very much oriented to the retailer we're trying to get the attention of. And, you know, in this situation, as I mentioned, we just don't call a retailer and say, do you want to locate in Watertown? We give them various options for them to consider. Not just calling them and saying, are you interested in the market? Here's a demographic profile. We actually anticipate where they would like to locate, and then we provide them the, the specific sites for them. And again, for every site that we identify through that highest and best use analysis, we make sure that you as a community has a marketing profile on it. One of the things that you as a community, from a national exposure standpoint, needs to do is to have a database of properties. So, when somebody's at an airport, somebody is, is in a hotel room, if they want to find out more information on your community, they can, and there's a place for them to go to find it. Very, very important for you to make it easy on these real estate site selectors. And again, I mentioned that we do the same thing for developers. We've got to identify developers in your situation that would be interested in coming in, looking closely at some of these available properties, just using two twelve as an example, to seeing if they can't take it to the next step. What we do through the retail recruitment is we find Kohl's, Petco, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. We find those interested retailers and, you know, well, let me, let us know what goes on from a development standpoint. We get those prospects, and then we have that conversation with a developer, and we marry the two together. And what it does, it expedites the, the development. Because we have done fifty to sixty percent of their work for them by identifying retailers interested in the property.
Kelly, I got a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm sitting in the airport, or I'm sitting somewhere in a hotel, and I'm in the retail development business, and I go online. What am I searching for? What, what, what key phrases, key tools do I use? You know, I'm looking for opportunities, right?
Sure.
So, how do you get Watertown into their, their hands when they're doing that work? How, how is that done?
Right. If you were to do it internally or use a group like ours, is we would, just like this, this is a, this is a site that we were able to market to a Costco, and they're ending up going there in, in a suburb of Dallas, Texas. But what you have to do is you ha, you cannot rely on them to call you. Same way with retailers. What happens is, and I was the site selector, if I were through your community, I would probably be through five or six other communities the same day. Then I go back to the hotel and I do my research, because they're not going to call you and say, would you show me around? They're looking at your community, they're getting a feel for the community, they're, they're looking at that community development aspect that I mentioned first thing, and they said, okay, there's a lot of land available, this is a possible maybe. So, when they get back to their hotel or to the airport, they're going to go on the website and start looking for specifics. And that's what I mentioned is, if you could have that information, if it be information on a site, information on your community, if you have that in an easy-to-find place, you're better off. The same way with developers. Developers are just not going to call and say, hey, do you have any land in, you know, in Watertown? You have to reach out to them. Again, if it's you or someone else, you've got to reach out to them and then have everything that they need. You have to answer, anticipate what their questions are, just like these things that I mentioned. You know, you've got to show them that there is a true opportunity here, that from a community standpoint, you're very pro-development, and that you're interested in getting that property developed.
So, in the cases of the, the airport, the gentleman at the airport, the person at the airport or the hotel, that you're on their radar already, now it's a matter of what, what info can we get them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before we go out and do any research, any outreach, we make sure our clients have this information on their website. Because when they go there, you need to be able to answer their questions. Because if you don't, rarely, rarely will they pick up the phone and call you. They're going to the next community that's trying to get them there.
It, it is interesting, though, Kelly, just to, to let you know, what we're seeing right now in town is that when Hobby Lobby made the decision to come here, we have had developers calling us and, and just kind of asking for information about what properties are available.
It's put you on, it's put you on the map, so to speak.
Yeah, we're ripe for, for downtown and, and all over, you know, for the Highway two twelve.
I have a good segue from the mayor's comment on ripe for uptown and downtown. I noticed that we are on phase three here, and there's no way we're going to get all the way through all the phases. But you're starting to get a really good captive audience here on downtown revitalization, and you've got some really good information here about how you would do that and some good information that dovetails with kind of the next speaker. So, I think now would be a good time for you to maybe toot your horn about what you've been doing with downtown revitalization, because I think that's really key, too. You have some very good points in here that talk about community development and economic development, and what is, how the two work together.
Right, right. And by the way, you have, you have the printout of all of this information. So, you know, we, again, we're seeing attention to downtowns that we haven't seen ever. Because again, we, we deal with a lot of national brands, and national brands have just not been interested in downtowns. They want the regional locations. But we're starting to see a lot of the franchises more interested in the downtown locations. And, and communities and municipalities are, they're, they're not chasing solely the big boxes. They're trying to understand that both can and should survive together. And, and that's something that we have seen. And, you know, our approach to downtown is, is totally different than what we do with, with the national brands. It's very educational-oriented. We've got to, and again, this is just a, you know, this is a, actually a client community where this, the, the business hours were till four PM, but they put a, a note on their door that said, you know, we close the door at three fifty, mean, don't come in, you know, you only have ten minutes to shop. So, it's very education-oriented, really showing them what the opportunities are in the downtown. We do the own independent retail trade area. We do the demographic profiling and, and all of those different things. But the key to a downtown is being able to work with the independent merchants and, and be able to convince them that the data research is accurate, that the opportunity by retail sector that we're able to identify is actually an opportunity. And we do all of that through workshops. And again, we have found, and really, one of the first groups we try to meet with when we come into a market on a new project is with the independent merchants. Because number one, we want them to know that we're trying to grow the market and not trying to compete with them and put them out of business. And that's just something that we have gained through sixteen years of, of really understanding the independent businessperson's mindset. And, you know, that their livelihood is in that, that storefront. But our workshops include a lot of, of education on determining how we come off with the data and being able to convince them and show them opportunities for expanding their merchandise. And we talked about a gap analysis. If there's a gap in shoe store sales or jewelry store sales, it doesn't always mean that you get a new jewelry store retailer downtown. It just could be a merchandise expansion into those sectors that show opportunity. Again, gives them a, a, a different level of consumer that may be coming in their store that's not coming in there right now. So, we're very much into the entrepreneurial approach of finding, as I mentioned, franchisees or finding somebody who wanted to open a jewelry store. Or it could be somebody that just wants to expand their merchandise mix.
Kelly, I have two quick questions for you. I know we're running out of time. On, on one page here, you have yourself and four people underneath you would be our team. How many cities does a team like that work with?
Well, right now, from the standpoint of full projects, we've got about twenty-five going across the country that are full projects. So, that would be, that would be five, it would be five communities per team.
Five per team?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And our typical approach is that we are in a community a minimum of three times, just because, again, as I mentioned earlier, and I'm, I'm ahead of the game because I got here earlier and have a, an understanding of your community, is that we have to know you if we're going to sell you.
Right. And what is, what if Aberdeen came to you and, and Watertown hooked up with you, and Aberdeen or Brookings or any other city in South Dakota were to say, Kelly, we want to hire you also?
Yeah.
What would you say?
Clearly, that's a conflict, and we would include that in our contract, that we would not work in competing communities. And we do that as a normal course of business.
All right. Well, Kelly, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
I'm glad Kim gave me an hour and a half, or I wouldn't have been able to get through it.
I remember talking to the gal at ICS. She says, don't worry about it, he's going to use up all his time. Yeah. And, and you did. And I don't think you ever stopped talking, and that's all right. I'm just, no, it's okay, Kelly.
Each of you have the presentation, you have my card. If there's any questions about what we covered or what we didn't cover, I mean, I'm a phone call away. And I would say this, if you choose to go this route in working with somebody, we would certainly welcome the opportunity.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think you did a great job, Kelly.
You might need a quick, quick little break before our next person coming up.
Sorry I went long, but at least you were warned.
You still have two minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's okay.
You have another period.
I do. I'm glad.
We have Greg's Auto Sales on Broadway, so I would be interested in visiting some.
Spencer, is there anybody upstairs? Is there still room?
Yeah.
Okay. Folks, if, if you, if other people are coming, we'll probably have them just buzz upstairs. This is the first time we've had this big of a crowd that doesn't have pitchforks.
[laughter]
It's all good. Well, Chuck, thanks for being here. We're all excited to, to listening to Strong Towns' presentation. And I'm going to just kind of turn it over to you.
Thank you. And when you have to talk with a microphone, you become like half mute. But I will, I will do, I will do this. Thank you so much. Is this the council? That's a big group of people. Wow.
Yeah, it is. Well, you're telling me.
How do you get anything done?
What are you trying to, you're talking about how many are our staff?
[laughter] Ward B, ward C, ward D, ward E, ward A. Wow. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me. And thank you, everybody who came out. Can you, is this the only screen? So you all are going to get a real side slant view. My, my computer kind of has it here if you can't see the screen. Thank you. My name's Chuck Marone. I'm an engineer and a planner with an organization called Strong Towns. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about this presentation we do called The Curbside Chat. Years ago, back in 2008, as we were going through the crazy election season, banks were failing, housing prices were dropping, I was listening to our national dialogue. And I really felt that none of the things I thought were important were being addressed. I was hearing, you know, our, our conversation going on. And I thought, you know, that, none of this seems relevant to me. And I, I finally got so frustrated. I said, "You know what? I'm, I might be, I might be crazy. I, I, I might be the only one seeing this. I might just be nuts. I'm going to start to write and just share these thoughts with my friends and see what they think." And so I started writing a blog. And I started writing three days a week. I promised myself I would discipline myself to write three days a week. After a year, I was astounded by the number of people that were reading this. A couple of my friends came to me and said, "You need to do something. You should really start a nonprofit." I said, "I don't like nonprofits. I don't work with them. I'm, I'm happy doing what I'm doing." And they said, "Okay, you just keep writing and we will, we'll get it started," which they did. About a year later, we had a 501(c)(3) and a foundation in Minnesota came to me and said, "Would you come and give us a presentation and just tell us what you're doing? We're very interested in your work." And so I gave them the first version of this presentation. And after I did, they said, "This is really important stuff. We're going to give you three years of startup money to go and share this message with as many people as you can." And ever since then, that's what I've been doing. So when someone asks me, "Can you come and give this talk?", I say, "Yes. Let's figure out how to make it happen." And so I got the invitation tonight, and I'm here to, to talk about this. You're going to get an, an updated version from what the Blenheim Foundation got three years ago. Real quick about us. Our mission is to support a model of development that allows our cities, towns, and neighborhoods to grow financially strong and resilient. We still do the blog, but now we're doing three or four posts a day, five days a week. We do a podcast two days a week. I'll give you our address at the end. If you're interested in our stuff, there's a lot of content there. I, I want to start this conversation by having you think about the way cities were built thousands of years ago. If we think about the way they were built, and these are two artist renderings, the one on the left is an ancient city called Ur, 6,000 B.C. The one on the right, of course, is ancient Rome. If we think about these cities, they were built around the dominant transportation technology of the day, that of course being your two feet, right? People walked everywhere they went. And so the scale of the buildings, the spacing, the distance between different types of things you would do on a normal day, all this was built around a society of people who walked. You can fast forward thousands of years. This is my hometown. I come from a little town of Brainerd, Minnesota, 14,000 people, a couple hours north of Minneapolis-St. Paul. This is what it looked like back in 1904. When we look at this place, people would arrive by stagecoach. They'd arrive by train. But once they got there, they walked everywhere they went. And so the spacing, the scale, the distance between different types of things you would do on a normal day, this is very similar to what you had seen for thousands and thousands of years. Beginning in the early 1900s and then accelerating after World War II, we began to build cities around a different transportation technology, that of course being the automobile. We came up with different building types, different building styles, different ways of arranging things on the landscape. If I were to ask people tonight to describe this, they would generally talk about it in terms of progress. We used to be civilization of people who walked everywhere. We built cities around people who walked. Now, we drive everywhere. We build cities around people who drive. Someday, we will have jet cars. We will build cities around jet cars. And someday, we will teleport and our cities will look completely different than they do today. This is a narrative of progress. It's a very comforting way to think about it because it puts us on this continuum of things always getting better. There's another way to look at this, however, that isn't quite as affirming. And I want to put this thought in the back of your mind as we start this conversation tonight. When we look at ancient Ur, we have to understand and acknowledge that by the time you get to ancient Ur, 6,000 B.C., people had been experimenting with how to build cities for a long, long time. They tried things. What worked, they would copy and expand upon. What didn't work, people died, civilizations went away. Those ideas weren't copied. By the time you get to ancient Ur and ancient Rome, you have a style and a mode of building and creating places developed by iterative trial and error over a long, long period of time. And by the time you get to my hometown in the early 1900s, you have a style and a form of building that is essentially universal. Yes, we use different building, you know, architecture. We use different building materials. But the style, the spacing, the layout, the design, the distance between different types of things is very, very similar with cities all over the world, different latitudes, different continents, different cultures. When we look at this style of development, while for many of us, this is the way things have always been done. I remember my, my early days as an engineer, I would ask a question, you know, "Why do we do this?" Well, this is the way it's done. For many of us, this seems like this is the way things have always been done. It's important to understand that we've only been doing this a very short period of time. These ideas weren't developed through trial and error. We didn't, you know, we didn't try this out in North Dakota for a couple hundred years and then bring it here, you know, the best stuff that worked. We just reshaped an entire continent all within a generation, all around these new sets of ideas. The ideas weren't developed slowly and iteratively over time. They largely came from European think tanks and universities. It's important for us to understand, as we start this conversation tonight, that we're living in one of the greatest experiments that's ever been tried. It's a big cultural experiment, a big social experiment, a big development experience, and a big financial experiment. No one has ever tried to reshape an entire continent around a new theory of building the way we have done. What we're going to talk about tonight are some of the financial ramifications of this, things that might not have been apparent when people first started out. If we think back to this city 100 years ago, if we were going to experience here jobs, growth, economic development, those were going to be byproducts of things we did locally. If we were going to have a job, if we were going to have a, a, a new type of development, that was going to be a byproduct of something that we did here. Today, and this is really a byproduct of changes made in the Great Depression and through World War II, jobs, growth, and economic development are a shared responsibility between the state, the federal government, and local governments. Today, we use three primary mechanisms to finance new growth and development. The first one is transfer payments between governments. The idea that the state, the federal government as our partner, will come in with grants and subsidies and low-interest loans and different types of things to allow us to do things like expand sewer systems and water systems, renovate buildings, put in streets, and other types of improvements that create growth and development. The second is transportation spending, the idea that we would cumulatively spend our, collect our transportation taxes, and then use them to build things like interstates, frontage roads, interchangeages, traffic signals, and the like. These create jobs while they're being built, and then create a platform where we can have additional growth after the fact. The third mechanism is debt. And while public debt is an important part of the narrative, if you go back to the early 1950s, the typical city in the U.S. spent 3% of their budget on debt service. Today, that is 16% and climbing. So public sector debt is an important part of this. But even more important is private sector debt, the ability of individuals and businesses to get low-interest loans spread out over long term with very little money down. When we combine these mechanisms, we use them at the local level to achieve growth. And of course, for governments, the growth is good because it gives us the revenue we need to do the things we want to do. This is kind of city administration 101. When we're growing, we have more money. The more money allows us to do the things that we want to do. Growth, growth, growth. There's some really powerful incentives at play here. And it's important that we understand them. When we get a federal grant, when we get a state subsidy of some type, when the DOT comes in with a project in our community, or when the private sector comes in with leveraged capital, as local governments, as local taxpayers, we generally pay a very small portion of those transactions. There might be an upsizing of a pipe. We might have to spend some staff time. There might be a small local match. But in the millions of dollars being spent, the money that comes out of our pocket upfront is usually very small. The benefit that we get, however, is substantial. Now, there's this new tax base. There's new transactions taking place. We get all that new tax revenue. It works out very well for us. The catch is that as part of these transactions, we agree to take on the long-term responsibility to service and maintain everything. We agree that we will provide police protection, fire protection, school bus, every, all the services that are needed. We agree that we will fix that road, that street, that sidewalk, that curb, that pipe, the pump, the valves. All those things become our responsibility. We are, in a sense, exchanging a near-term benefit in cash for a long-term liability. There's only one of two ways that this strategy makes any sense. If we think about things in terms of, of ancient Rome, we want to be around for a long period of time. We're not just investing for this generation. We're investing for the long term. There's only one of two ways that this strategy makes any sense. Either growth is going to continue at ever-accelerating rates. In other words, every time we run into a financial hiccup, we're going to be able to generate that much more new growth. We can take that cash we get, and we can make good on all the promises we've made in past generations. Or the pattern of development, the way we actually go about laying out and designing our cities, is going to create for us more wealth, more cash, than it's going to generate for us liabilities over the long term. Now, everybody in this room understands that this first assumption's not true, right? I mean, it's not mathematically possible. But even if it were possible, we've been through enough of, of this in our economy where we know we're not going to grow at accelerating rates forever. Unfortunately, this second assumption is also not true. And this is where, for a, a, a brief period of time, I'm going to get a little bit technical on you. I am an engineer, so I have to do a little bit of technical stuff. I promise it won't be painful. One of the first things that we did at Strong Towns is we set out to debunk the notion, or at least test the notion, and wound up kind of debunking it, what we've come to call the quantum theory of economic development. If you talk to engineers, planners, economic development officials, they'll often say, "Well, okay, this transaction might not make any financial sense. This transaction might not make any financial sense. This transaction might not make any financial sense." But when you combine them all, all of a sudden, you get growth and development, and things tend to work out. We've called this the, the quantum theory of economic development, because if you can't measure it, you really can't know. What we said is that there are parts of our system where we can measure it, where the only reason for them existing is the development that is actually there. And for the most part, these are the parts of our systems that, in theory, should be the most productive. They're the parts that are kind of the add-on to everything else we're doing. This is a, a prime example. This is a, a development on a dead-end cul-de-sac. There's no through traffic. There's no commercial traffic. It's just a dead-end cul-de-sac with the homes along it. The only reason that this cul-de-sac exists is to provide access for the homes that are there. When this was first built in the mid-1990s, it was a gravel road. The city went out and had it paved. When they had it paved, the city paid half the cost. The property owners paid the other half. The city then took on the long-term obligation to fix and maintain it. We asked the question, "Okay, based on the revenue the city is collecting from the people who live on this road, the only people who use it in any significant way, how long is it going to take the city to recoup the half they just spent to build it?" The answer's 37 years. Now, the roadway's not going to last 37 years. And when it falls apart, it's going to be 100% the city's responsibility to go out and fix. These property owners are not contributing anywhere near the amount that would need to happen in order for that to financially work out. Here is another development. This one, again, a closed loop with a dead-end cul-de-sac. There's no through traffic here. There's no commercial traffic here. This is just residential properties. This road exists solely for the purpose of providing access to these parcels. This was built in the early 1980s. When it was built, the developer paid to put the road in, paved. Those costs were then rolled over into the sale of the properties. People have been paying for that on their mortgages for years. They've also been paying their taxes. This road had completely fallen apart. The city went out to fix it. The cost was $354,000. We asked the question, "Okay, based on the revenue the city is collecting from the people within this development, the only people who really use this road in any substantive way, how long is it going to take them to recoup what they just spent to fix it?" The answer's 79 years. We then said, "Okay, let's say that we wanted to collect enough money from these property owners between now and the time the road fell apart to actually have the revenue to fix it." What would that mean? It would mean we would need to have an immediate 46% increase in taxes, with annual increases of 3% over inflation every year for the next 25 years, with all that money going just to maintain the roadway, the sewer, the water, the storm sewer, all vastly more expensive. Now, sometimes people say, "Okay, Chuck, we get it. We know we lose money on residential property. We make it up on commercial. Commercial's our cash cow." To which my- To which my response is always right off the bat, "I don't know any corporation that loses money on 90% of what it does and tries to make it up on the last 10%. I don't know why an incorporated municipality would adopt that as a financial strategy." Nonetheless, we've kind of convinced ourselves that it doesn't really matter what happens in our residential neighborhoods as long as we've got enough commercial. Commercial's where we're going to make all of our money. This is a business park. This is the kind of build-it-and-they-will-come investment that we generally like to make to create jobs and growth and economic development. This one was built in the mid-1990s. It's got the wide industrial-sized streets, sewer, water, storm sewers, all the utilities. Today, this is completely built out. Every single lot is occupied. The city felt this was so successful that they wanted to repeat it, build the exact same thing right next door. They're just going to mirror it and build the exact same thing with the exact same layout. We asked the question, "Okay, if we could build the same thing for the same price and get the same investment, would this be a good project?" In today's dollars, it would cost $2.1 million. There's $6.6 million of assessed value out there in that park. Now, pause for a second. Of that $6.6 million, four of those lots are a church. Two of the lots belong to the school district. It's a bus maintenance facility. One of the lots is a city maintenance garage. One of the lots is a county maintenance garage. These are all important facilities in the community, right? We need churches. We need schools. We need public buildings. Not a single one of them pay a dollar in taxes to the city. Of the remaining lots, the ones that theoretically would be taxpayers, every single one was either sold for a dollar and/or given a long-term tax subsidy in order to attract them to move into the park. For the sake of our analysis, we assumed that in this new expansion, every single lot would be built upon within 12 months of the completion of the project by a full tax-paying, non-subsidized entity. And that every penny of new revenue would go to retire that bond. If that were the case, which is a wildly optimistic scenario, it would still take the city almost three decades, 29 years, just to break even. That's 29 years where everybody else's taxes would need to go up to pay, to plow the snow, mow the ditches, provide police and fire protection, and every other service that would be needed. When I first started out doing this presentation, I was really proud of the work we had done. And I would go through and I would give like about 15 of these examples. After a certain period of time, people just started to cry and it didn't go well. I found I can make the point in just three. But what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through what's going on from a cash flow standpoint. If you're interested in more case studies, there'll be a bunch on our website. And I'll give you that address at the end. Let's say that a developer comes to us, says, "I have a piece of property that I would like to build on. I'm not asking for any subsidies. I'm willing to follow all of your rules. I will, at my expense, build all the residential properties. I'll build all the commercial properties. I will pay to put into your standards all the necessary utilities and streets and curbs and sidewalks. I'll do all of that. The only thing that I'm asking as a developer is that when I finish all this building, that you, the city, you, the public, agree to take over the long-term maintenance and responsibility for this." What would we say? You'd say fantastic, right? You're going to meet all of our rules? You don't want any subsidies? This is all, you know, all your expense? We spend nothing? This would be fantastic, right? But let's say, you know, we've heard of this Strong Towns stuff. We want to be financially prudent people. So what we're going to do is when the money comes in from this new development, we're going to take the portion that would normally get spent in other parts of the city fixing and maintaining stuff, and we're just going to set that aside. And every year when that money comes in, we're going to set that portion aside and we're allowed to accumulate so that when we get out a generation from now and we have to make good on those promises, we'll have a pot of money there to do it. This is what that looks like. In year one, everything is brand-new. Developer paid for everything. It didn't cost us a dime. The money comes in. We take that portion and we set it aside. In year two, a little bit more money comes in and we add to what we had in year one. In year three, we add a little bit more. And each year, we add a little bit more. You can see a five-year-old pipe isn't costing you anything. A 10-year-old street isn't costing you anything. A 15-year-old sidewalk is not costing you anything. And so we get out a couple of decades and all we've had is positive cash coming in. We're feeling very, very rich. We've got quite a bit of money saved up. The problem is, when we get to, in this example, year 25, and we have to make good on that promise we made way back in year one, what we find is that the cumulative amount of money is insufficient. And from a cash flow standpoint, we run far into the negative. Now, cities are not one development, right? Cities are a collection of developments. They're a collection of neighborhoods. So let's say that our developer comes back in a couple of years later and says, "You know, that development worked out really well for me. It worked out really well for you. I would like to do a similar-sized development." And every other year from this point forward, a developer walks in the door with a similar-sized proposal. In other words, the ideal scenario for any city, nice, steady, continuous growth. And we take that money that's coming in, we set aside, and we save it for the day when we have to make good on all these promises that we're making. Here's what that looks like. In year one, you've got your first development, comes online. It pays in the entire 25 years shown here. In year three, you add a second one. In year five, a third, and on and on and on. And you can see, not only are you having growth, but you're having growth upon growth upon growth. Your cash actually starts to kind of accelerate upwards. You've got no cost, but you've got a lot of revenue coming in. You're feeling very, very wealthy. And when you get to year 25 and you have to make good on that promise you made way back in year one, yes, you've got to spend a little bit of money, but it's not a big deal, right? You've had all of this growth. The growth creates what we call the illusion of wealth. Because as we all intuitively understand, if you lose money on every transaction, you don't make it up in volume. When you lose money over the long term on every project that you do, the longer you go out in the time horizon, the more downward pressure there is on your budget. This is the question I was trying to answer in 2008. Why are cities going broke? Why, despite all the investment, despite all the growth, despite all the job creation, do we lack money to just do basic, basic things? It's not that we're dumb. It's not that government is wasteful. It's not that we're not taxed enough or we're taxed too much. It's that we have a bad system of development. Now, let me ask you a couple of questions. Do you recognize yourself in this chart? Do you see human nature here? This is how we're wired. This is why people smoke, right? Smoke, and then, oh, I've got emphysema, right? This is why you'll go home and have that extra bowl of ice cream and watch TV instead of going for a walk, right? Oh, this is a good show. This is good ice cream. Oh, no, heart disease, right? We are wired as humans to strongly value benefit today and very deeply discount pain in the future. This is how we're wired. This is a human failing. It's not an individual failing. It's a human failing. We all share this. We're all built this way. What happened to the civilization thousands of years ago that built in this way? Yeah, they failed. They went out of business. They were not copied. They did not become part of that DNA of how we build cities. These ideas were not transmitted to the next generation. We're in a very strange place. It's ironic because we look back with deep admiration at this generation of people who said, "There's nothing we can't overcome," right? "There's no dream that's too big. There's nothing we can't reach if we try." And there's a lot to admire in that, and I get that. I intuitively, I'm an American. I understand that that gives me goosebumps too. Yet, when we're talking about things like the way we build our places, these are not transactions like going to the moon, right? These are things that happen over multiple generations, over very long periods of time, very like slowly-developing kind of things. When we look around at cities today, we see all of them, big, small, in-between, struggling financially to just do basic, basic things. Every level of government right now today is broke, right? Every level of government right now today has more liabilities, more things they promised to do than they could possibly deliver. For cities, it's not a function of us not being smart people. It's not a function of government being good or government being bad. It's a function of the fact that we have undertaken a huge experiment and we're living right now way out in this end of it. I have one more chart to show you. It's actually more depressing than this one. But then we're going to be done with charts and we're going to go on to happier things and start talking about how we can react and start to deal with this. But we've got to do this one first because this one is very important. This is a graph of debt. Everybody in this room knows the conversation that we're having about our national debt, right? Our national debt, $19 trillion. It's an enormous sum of money. It's beyond our ability to fathom, right? I had seven-quarters of calculus. I'm not going to pretend that I can fathom what a trillion dollars is, let alone 19 of them. You guys had the Weekly Reader when you were kids, right? I remember when I was in fourth grade, we had the Weekly Reader. It had a little breakup box. It said, "If you took the national debt, change it into dollar bills and stack them on top of each other, it would go to the moon and back like 23 times," or something like that. As if, for a fourth grader, replacing one abstract concept with another abstract concept would clarify things, right? These are enormous sums of money. They're beyond our ability to fathom. In this chart here, the black line, or I'm sorry, the blue line, the bottom one here, that's the growth in our national debt. That's the growth in that unfathomable number. The black one right above it, that's the growth in our GDP. This green one, the one that soars up like this, that's private sector debt. That's debt that we share. That's home mortgages, commercial real estate loans, auto loans, credit cards, margin interest accounts. It's private sector debt. The way we financed the first generation of this new experimental way to build a great America was by using our savings and by reinvesting that illusion of wealth back into creating more growth. As things started to become more difficult, as the liabilities started to pile up, we had to make good on some of these old promises, things started to slow down. It took us a while to figure out what to do. Think mid-'70s to early-'80s, right? But we eventually shifted from an economy based on growth through savings and investment to an economy based on growth through debt accumulation. And growth through debt accumulation became such an important part of our economy that as we crossed over into the third generation of this new experimental way to build, we actually allowed our financial system to become predatory. We needed the growth so bad that we said things like, "You can't afford a house? Well, now you can. You can't afford a down payment? Well, you don't need a down payment. You can afford a small house? Well, here. You can now afford a large house." We needed the growth so badly that we allowed our systems to prey on our friends and neighbors. Our ability to continue this experiment by having our friends and neighbors take on accelerating levels of debt is just simply not viable. Obviously, there's some huge implications to all this. The mechanisms of growth that we become accustomed to are waning. The federal government, the state government are vastly overcommitted. They do not have anywhere near the resources to bail out every city that is in financial trouble. I was in Detroit two weeks ago. Do you see the federal government running in to save Detroit? No. No. Why? Because it's impossible. There's not enough money in this country to save one Detroit, let alone all of them, right? The DOTs are vastly overcommitted. I don't have the numbers on South Dakota. I don't have the specific numbers. But I have seen where your DOT is now converting some of your paved roads into gravel. Some of your counties are doing this as well. Why? Because they don't have the money to maintain them. At a national level, we had these magical 95, 5, 90, 10, 80, 20 splits. And we funded state DOTs based on the number of lane miles they had. So, we went to the state DOTs for decades and said, "If you build a new highway, we will pay for 90% of it, the federal government. And if you build a new highway, the more lane miles you have, the more money you'll get on an annual basis from us." So what did we do? We just went and built highways like it was no tomorrow, right? And now, what we find is that every state has far more lane miles, not only than they're getting money from the federal government, but that they have any chance of getting from their own residents. The private sector is maxed out. We do not have the ability to take on accelerating levels of debt, even if we didn't have our largest generations either in, you know, in or nearing retirement where they're not taking on debt or already overburdened with student loans where they're not taking on debt. What this means is that local governments are going to be forced to absorb the costs of our development pattern. If we want that road fixed, we have to pay for it. If we want that pipe repaired, that money is going to have to come from us. This can't be done in the current pattern of development without some incredibly large tax increases and/or some devastatingly large cuts in services. Now, I wasn't invited to come here and tell you what you already know, right? This is the debate, the conversation we're having at every level of government everywhere across this country. How big is the tax increase going to be? Who's going to pay for that? How deep is the service cut going to be? And where is that going to be felt? It is critical at the local level that we see the third variable in this sentence. The third variable being the current pattern of development. As long as we continue to build in a way that is functionally insolvent, there is no way that our cities are going to avoid insolvency. As long as we continue to build with an approach that gives us an illusion of wealth today in exchange for enormous, unpayable liabilities in the future, there's no way that our cities are going to avoid default. Whether that is a hard default, like we see in places like Detroit and Stockton and San Bernardino, or whether it's a soft default, like we see in thousands of cities across this country, where they've laid off police and firefighters, they've put off critical maintenance, they close libraries early, shut off streetlights, don't maintain parks because they simply don't have the money to do it. We have to start talking about how we build cities that are financially productive. So how do we do this? And I had to, very early on, I had to insert this slide because I would get to the end of the presentation. The rest of the time, we're going to talk about how we approach things differently. I would get to the end and someone would always stand up and say, "Chuck, you've really made me angry. You've come here tonight. You scared the heck out of us, but you didn't tell us the solution. What is the solution to these problems?" It took me a while to actually hear what was being asked because I was hearing words that they weren't really lining up with what the intention was. It took me a while to figure out that what was being asked as a solution was this. "What can someone else change about what they're doing so that I don't have to change anything about what I'm doing?" We've tried all of those. We've tried all of those solutions, right? We sometimes call that kicking the can down the road, right? We've tried all those. At Strong Towns, we don't talk about solutions. In fact, I will tell you, there is no solution to the problems that I've shown you tonight. There's no solution. There's no set of policies that will solve these things. What we talk about at Strong Towns are rational responses. How do thoughtful, intelligent people, working together within a community, look at this complex set of problems they face, roll up their sleeves, and respond as thoughtful, rational people? And when we start talking about rational responses, I always go back to this photo here. This again is my hometown back in 1904. When I first saw this photo, I was just blown away. I was just astounded. You know, as a planner, I looked at this and I see the way the buildings line up perfectly, the way they frame the public realm at just the right Greco-Roman ratios, right? The buildings have great symmetry. They front the public realm in the perfect way. There's great segmentation of space. This is- This is an exquisitely designed street. Let me ask you some questions about these people. How thick was their zoning code? How many boards and committees did you have to go to in this city to get approval to build something? How much federal grants did they get? How many state subsidies did they receive? How many miles of pipe and street did they lay in order to attract this development? How many engineers and planners and economic development advisors did they have on staff? How much tax increment financing did they give out? We can go through the litany of things that we've convinced ourselves are absolutely essential to building successful places. These people had none of them, yet look at what they built. These people didn't even have thirty-year mortgages, right? These were a bunch of illiterate lumberjacks in the middle of nowhere, and they built a fantastic place. How did they do this? How did they know how to do this? It's really simple. They took the materials they had on hand and they copied the style that they knew worked. They copied what people had done before them. After seventy years of all the new ways we're gonna go about achieving growth, all the codes and regulations, all the incentives, all the subsidies, all the professional advice, here's what this exact same street looks like today. Yeah, that's the proper reaction, yeah. It's a wasteland of half-occupied buildings and parking lots. And if you wanna see in one snapshot why our cities are struggling financially, understand that there's a half-million dollars of public infrastructure in that little stretch of streetwear. Where's the wealth that's gonna maintain that generation after generation after generation? I was giving a lecture at a university in Boise, Idaho, and I showed this photo and a hand came up in the back, students stood up, said, "Chuck, I'm from Costa Rica. Costa Rica is a very poor country, we can't afford to build the way that you build. When we build, we have to build one block at a time, and before we can build the next block, we have to make sure that all the spaces on the block we just built are filled in, otherwise, we won't be able to afford it. We're a very poor country, we can't afford to build this way." We're a very poor country now too. We can't afford to build this way either. And for a long period of time, that illusion of wealth made us think that this kind of thing didn't matter, that we could just have blocks and blocks and blocks of unproductive stuff. We could run pipe all over the place and roads all over the place, and it didn't matter what wealth was produced. We felt so rich that we didn't stop to ask some basic questions about what is the return on our investment. But we're no longer a rich country, or we can't pretend we're a rich country. These things do matter, and we actually have to start asking a different set of questions. So, how do we start to change our thinking? The very first thing is, we need to get rid of our worst habits. Build it and they will come. Build and they will come is a brilliant movie plot. It is a terrible economic development strategy. We are in what we call the desperation phase of the suburban experiment. If you are a city and you wanna be taken seriously today in the economic development game, what do you have to do? You have to have spent millions of dollars to have shovel-ready sites, you have to have lots all prepped in case the right person comes trolling through town, you have to have a team of experts ready to hand out public money for anybody that might want it. This is not how cities build wealth, and this is not how cities have ever built wealth. I'm going to show you now the very simple way that cities go about building wealth. Do any of you recognize this place here? Does it look familiar to any of you? If I said this was Watertown, would that shock you? It would? Doesn't look like your place at all? If I said Rapid City, is there the wrong trees? Yeah, too many trees. If I said Minneapolis, could you buy that? Yeah? Chicago, maybe? If the trees were different and I told you it was San Francisco, or maybe Houston? Yeah? If we went back far enough, there's no photos, but if we went back far enough, you know, Manhattan started just like this, right? Every city that was ever built prior to our new experimental way of building started just like this, right? A few pop-up shacks, some hopes and some dreams, right? We can go back far enough, I mean, this could be London, or Paris, or Rome, right? They all started just like this. This could be Romulus and Remus standing out here, right? On this continent, we built thousands of places like this, and for a variety of complex reasons, reasons that defy our ability to predict or project, or even to fully understand after the fact, a lot of these places failed. When a place like this fails, what happens? Does the stock market crash? Does unemployment skyrocket? Do we have to have an emergency session of Congress to bail out Wall Street banks? No. A few people lose a little bit of money, they salvage what they can, they move on to the next place. These are little bets. We built thousands of these across this country, and for a variety of complex reasons, reasons that defy our ability to predict, or project, or even fully understand after the fact, a lot of these places were successful. And when they were successful, they would grow in a very simple-to-understand way, they would grow incrementally up, incrementally out, and become incrementally more intense. This is my hometown, this is Brainerd, Minnesota. This is what it looked like in 1870. And after thirty years of growing incrementally up, incrementally out, and becoming incrementally more intense, these little pop-up shacks would be torn down and replaced by these buildings here that I'd shown you earlier. New pop-up shacks were built out on the edge, right? As the city was growing incrementally out. And after another forty years of growing incrementally up, incrementally out, and becoming incrementally more intense, these three- and four-story wood structures would be replaced with buildings of brick and granite. We don't build wealth by going to the casino and putting it all on red. The way we build wealth is by making small investments over a broad area over a long period of time. I'm gonna show you how powerful this style of development is. These are two identical blocks in my hometown. The one on the left, I've labeled "old and blighted," the one on the right, I've labeled "shiny and new." If you look at them, you'll see they're the exact same size, they have the exact same area, the exact same amount of public infrastructure, they're on the same thoroughfare, the same neighborhood. The only thing different about them is the style of development that's on them. That old and blighted block looks like this. In the 1920s, as my city was growing incrementally, the next increment of "out" were these three blocks. So what you are looking at here is the cheapest commercial building you were gonna be able to build in the 1920s. This was their equivalent of those pop-up shacks. And had things continued, as they had literally for thousands of years around the world, what would have happened? Over time, these would have been torn down, replaced with buildings that were two and three-story, or they would have been added on to, they would have incrementally grown up and become incrementally more intense. But that's not what happened, right? After these were built, we had the Depression, we had World War II, then we had a completely different style of development that just skipped right over top of these and started building out on the edge. These blocks have stagnated for ninety years. Two blocks over used to look just like this. The city labeled it "blight," got it torn down, and now we have the new drive-through Taco John's. Everybody was thrilled with this. We got rid of blight. We have a new building that meets our codes, it meets the setbacks, it meets the parking requirements, it meets the sign ordinance. The engineer was happy because we got rid of the nasty on-street parking, now the cars can flow more smoothly. The environmental people were happy because now we've got some green space and some natural plantings, stormwater area. The bike-walk people were happy because they got a sidewalk. The sidewalk ends right there, but it, you know, got a little stretch. Here's what nobody bothered to look at. That old blighted rundown block has a total value of 1.1 million dollars. When this was built, that shiny new block, the same size area, the same amount of public infrastructure, had a value of only 800,000 dollars. That old block is worth 42% more. Understand what you're looking at. You're looking at the traditional style of development, the way we built places around the world for thousands and thousands of years. You're looking at it in its infancy, after ninety years of neglect, and it still outperforms the stuff we build brand-new today by a wide margin. And we all know the trajectory of the taco joint, right? Twenty years from now, there'll be a new taco joint up the road, this one will be turned into a used car lot, ten years later, it will be boarded up, they'll be selling drugs out the back, and we'll be trying to get a grant to get it torn down, right? We've all been around long enough to see this happen. In fact, two years subsequent to this being built, here's what happened to the property Now, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions about this that I think are very cued into what is going on in this community right now. Let's look at these two blocks. Let's say, this block here, we recognize as a city that we're insolvent. We recognize that we have more commitments than we have cash, and so, we don't have money to blow. We can't go spend a ton of money making transformative things, we have to make small little investments. I'm gonna ask you to do something that's not very South Dakota, and I'm gonna ask you to speak up and give me some ideas. But I'm gonna ask you, without spending a lot of money, money you don't have, what kind of things would you do on this block if you wanted to increase the wealth, increase the value of these properties? Go ahead, anybody who has an idea, just speak up. Plant some flowers. Some landscaping out here would be really great, flowers would add a lot, please. You know what? A little bit of elbow grease and some paint would go a long way on those buildings. Yep, not very expensive, we could do that, please. You know what? Some benches would be really nice, there's nothing out here like that at all, I think that would really help, please.
Standardizing a little bit of the look, you know, you've got, I can see several generations of different looking signs.
Sure. We could try to help just clean up the aesthetics a little bit, yep? Build upwards? That would actually require a change in the code, assuming building upwards meant adding residential. Right now, you can't have residential on top, even though that's like the standard building form that cities have had for thousands of years. We'd have to change the code to allow that, but that would be something we could easily do and allow that. Please, somebody else? We could actually go diagonal, I think that would be great, slowing down this traffic would be a huge assistance to those buildings, yep? Do you see what we're doing here? We could go pick twenty people off the street, put them in a room, say, "You got an hour, brainstorm as many ideas as you can." After an hour, we would walk out of there with fifty things we could go out and try, none of which would cost a whole lot of money, but things we could do to try to see if we could get this block moving in the right direction again. Same question, you don't have any money, you don't have money to throw at things, you can't tell property owners what to do, you have to work with them. What kind of things would you do to make this property more valuable? Yeah, sell drugs out the back, right? I have a bunch of initials behind my name that say I know something, I have no ideas. I have no ideas. There's people who are working on this, they sometimes call it sprawl repair, suburban retrofit, I don't really like those terms much, but when you look at their renderings, what they do is they assume they have millions of dollars to spend. We don't. This style of development has incredible financial upside and very limited financial downside. While this style of development has very limited financial upside and a downside that can literally go negative. This is the same kind of thing we see on the edge of our communities. This is our Mills Fleet Farm. Brainerd is the home of Mills Fleet Farm, so we have the biggest one in the world, that makes us special. This is a double-sized big-box store. This is a Mills Auto Dealership and Gas Station. This is a nineteen-acre piece of property, it's the most valuable piece of property in the entire Brainerd Lakes area. Here is nineteen acres of our downtown. I know we're close enough to home here where people have been, how many people have been to my hometown? Wow, that's incredible, okay. If you've not been there, if you've seen the movie Fargo, not so flattering, but not so inaccurate portrayal of downtown Brainerd. In my lifetime, nothing new has been built. Pretty much, buildings have burned down and we've made them into parking lots, or we've torn them down to make them into parking lots, but no new investments. Nineteen acres of our downtown. When we look at that Mills site out on the edge of town, we see a total value of 600,000 dollars per acre. This is a huge sum of money. When the Mills people show up at a meeting, we just stop the meeting and ask them, you know, "What can we do for you?" This is the most valuable single piece of property in the entire area. But when we look at this nineteen acres, it's 134 different properties configured differently, we see a total value that is 78% greater. There's actually 78% more wealth, there's 78% more property tax generated in this nineteen acres than there is in this nineteen acres. And when we talk about retail tax, because this is a regional draw, and this is hardly a draw at all, the retail tax is fairly similar as well. Let me ask some questions about this one. How much money did we spend to get that Mills building? Well, the DOT spent almost 200 million on a bypass. We spent another 30 million to run sewer and water out to this spot here. I actually, when I worked as an engineer, designed this road, this was two and a half million, millions more from the county on this, on the frontage road. How much did my generation spend to get this wealth here? This is not, this is wealth that my great-great-grandparents and their contemporaries built slowly and incrementally over time, and then bequeathed to us as an endowment of sorts for the community, right? We've slowly melted it down. This is heretical to say in my hometown, but I can say it here. What happens when Mills goes out of business? What happens when this is no longer the highest and best use of this property? What comes next? I don't know, but we've all seen that happen, right? We've all seen the big site that goes down, and then whatever comes next is quite a bit lower on the financial pecking order, right? There's 134 different properties in the downtown. What happens when one of them loses a tenant, goes out of business, decides to relocate to Florida, retires? What happens? It's an opportunity for someone else, right? We've seen buildings in the downtown go from a retailer to an accountant's office to a coffee shop, right? What happens when, in all of our eternal wisdom, we figure out that we have zoned this property and we have too much office and not enough retail? Or we have too much residential and not enough office? We have too much retail and not enough residential? Well, each of these properties is very flexible, very adaptable, can be easily reconfigured. We don't have to be geniuses, we don't have to know the market absorption rates and predict thirty years in the future. This is a highly adaptable style of building. There's reason our ancestors built this way. This not only is not very productive financially, but it's incredibly fragile way to build. This style of development is not only financially really potent, but is incredibly adaptable and flexible. This is a pattern we see over and over and over again around the country. We've, along with this group called Urban Three out of Asheville, North Carolina, modeled hundreds of cities around this country. What I'm gonna show you right now, if you think of a farmer going out and spreading seed across a field, the parts of the field that grow up the tallest, we say, "Those are the most productive parts of the field." The parts that don't grow up as much, they're less productive. What I'm gonna show you now in the vertical is value per acre. Where are the most productive forms of development in the community? I start with Buffalo, New York. Buffalo, New York is a city that was hollowed out after World War II. They have lost population every single census since 1940. This is a place that has been in steep decline for a long, long time. If you go to downtown Buffalo, it will feel very hollowed out and empty, yet when you step back and look and say, "Where is the wealth in this community?", can you point to where the traditional downtown is? And not only is it a store of wealth and a store of value, but it massively outperforms... And not only is it a store of wealth and a store of value, but it massively outperforms everything else around it. We see this in cities of all sizes. Here's a smaller city in upstate New York, about 45,000, we see the same exact pattern. This is a small little town where I live, Crosby, Minnesota. When I first went to Crosby, Crosby said, "Chuck, we've got some great stuff going on out here, we've got some great stuff going on up here, but these neighborhoods are just terrible. We've gotta figure out how to get some of this stuff torn down and rebuilt in a style that actually works." And then we showed them where all their wealth is. In those poor neighborhoods. In the neighborhoods where all the poor people live. This is a pattern we see everywhere around the country. Every city we've ever modeled, every city we've ever looked at, when we have building patterns based around slow incremental development, scaled to humans, we see very, very high returns in our investment. When we go to the other end of the spectrum, large-scale development that is not scaled to people, we see the investment levels fall way off. This is a map of Lafayette, Louisiana, and I'm gonna apologize to everybody who's red-green colorblind. I will walk you through this. This is a map of Lafayette. We did the most extensive study ever done in terms of return on investment for the city of Lafayette. They came to us and said, "We don't have any money to do anything, and we're not sure why, because we've had a lot of growth." It was actually the mayor, he said, "I'm getting pressured to raise taxes, and I think raising taxes would solve the problem for my term, but would not actually solve the problem. I want you to help me figure out what the problem is." So we went out and we analyzed the entire city, every stream of revenue they had, property tax, sales tax, fees, everything. Then we looked at every expense they had, and what we did is we allocated them by parcel. So everywhere where you see a parcel in red, and for those of you who are red-green colorblind, I'm gonna point where these are, every place you see a parcel in red is a parcel where the city is spending or committed to spend more money than they are going to bring in. And every place you see green is a place where the city is going to bring in more money than they're committed or are spending. I will walk you through this. This spike right here is a green spike. That's the most valuable area in the city. It's a development called River Ranch, is a new urbanist development. What that means is that it's a development with traditional design patterns and modern financing. So tight, narrow streets, tight buildings, but all built at the same time with modern financing. It's an open question how well this will do in the future. All the roofs will fail at the same time, all the sidewalks will fail at the same time, everything is gonna be needed and maintained at the same time in the future, but for right now, it's absolutely killing it. It's the most productive place they have in the city. This green area right here, that's their core downtown. Now, Lafayette would kill to have your downtown. They really would. Their downtown, not nearly as nice. Is a college town, there's some dive bars, a couple kind of restaurants, a lot of underutilized property, but yet financially, they're just killing it. There's an arc here of green, kind of a crescent of green right here. Those are the poor neighborhoods. Those are the neighborhoods when we were looking at getting an Airbnb for a week to stay, the city staff said, "Don't go over there." That's where the murders, the burglaries, all the bad stuff happens. These are the poorest neighborhoods. What's this stuff out here? This is all red out here, this is all red. Here you got your mall, the big-box stores, the strip malls, the drive-thru restaurants. These are the subdivisions with the three- and four-car attached garages. That's what this stuff is out here. There's two subsidies that this map is showing us. Subsidy number one, and this is a universal subsidy that we see everywhere across this country, the poor neighborhoods are subsidizing the affluent neighborhoods. Subsidy number two, the future residents of Lafayette are subsidizing today's residents of Lafayette. In Lafayette, the typical homeowner pays $1,500 a year in taxes to the city. In order to make good on every promise that is represented in this map, that typical homeowner would have to go from $1,500 a year of local taxes to $9,200 a year. That is not going to happen. And so, at some point in the future, the city is gonna have to make a decision on what they don't take care of, what they let go. Right now, they have a $45 million backlog of road maintenance, their annual budget for road maintenance is $600,000. They could quadruple their budget and they will never catch up, right? This is a pattern we see in places like Detroit and Flint, where they got started doing this 30 years ahead of everybody else, they arrived at the logical destination 30 years ahead of everybody else. This is a pattern we see in city after city after city, where the illusion of wealth created by this props up the entire system for a while, but then we wind up kind of spread out like not enough butter over too much bread, right? And there's just not enough there to maintain everything. And so Lafayette, much like Detroit, is gonna have to make some very hard decisions in the future on what they choose to maintain and what they don't. That's the conversation they're having right now. I want you to take a look at some of these places, because I think looking at them helps crystallize in our mind the possibilities for how we start to dig out of these problems. These are from North Carolina, but they could be anywhere, the numbers are pretty close to the same. Here's a Big K, $384,000 an acre. Here's a Walmart, $967,000 an acre. We switch to the downtown, you've got an old warehouse converted into a supper club, $5 million an acre, and then my favorite of all time, Jimmy's Pizza, $3.4 million an Now, let me ask a question. We sometimes are overwhelmed by this, where do we start? This problem seems too big for us to handle. I think the question we have to ask ourselves is much more basic. It's really this. Do we have what it takes? Do we have the capacity, the wherewithal, the intelligence to build something as refined and sophisticated as Jimmy's Pizza? Because if we do, if we do, we can step back and look at all the gaps that we have in our community, and we can see that that's all it really takes to start building wealth. I think we can actually do better than this, but if this is all we're capable of doing, think of the opportunity that we're providing, right? Think of the opportunity that's there, because we all understand, you know, who owns this? Where do these profits go, right? We all understand this kind of model, and while this is easy to finance and it looks big and it looks flashy, this stuff doesn't look near as sexy, right? But where do the profits go here? Who is starting this business here? What kind of implications are there for a city with 100 of these, right? This is easy to do, and when we go do this, we don't have to build new pipe, we don't have to build new road, we don't have to make huge investments. We're just taking the stuff we have and making better use of them. We're filling in the spaces that we have to get more out of our investments, and we're building wealth and we're creating opportunity in our community in the process. Here's the last idea, and it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the whole Jimmy's Pizza concept. There's a saying out of Silicon Valley that goes, "Innovation that happens from the top down tends to be orderly but dumb, while innovation from the bottom up tends to be chaotic but smart." We all have a preference for smart over dumb, right? But we actually have a much stronger preference for order over chaos. And if you doubt that, just drive your Main Street, right? Have you ever sat at one of those traffic signals at 1:00 in the morning? We're willing to tolerate a lot of dumb in order to have order, right? That's the way we're wired. Let me show you what this looks like from a city standpoint. This is Memphis, Tennessee, and I've been fortunate enough to do some work with Memphis, Tennessee, this is a great city. It's a city that shows up in a lot of the desperation statistics, right there with Detroit. Homicide rates, out-of-wedlock births, poverty rates, Detroit and Memphis are often 1-2-2-1. Memphis did everything they were supposed to do after World War II to create growth and prosperity and jobs. They ran the highways through the middle of the city, they ripped down buildings to make it happen, they ripped down buildings to build parking lots, they expanded outward, running sewer and water out further and further, they ripped out neighborhoods they didn't think were very good, they rebuilt things they thought would be better. They eventually built a beltway that kept extending out further and further, they eventually built a second beltway. They subsidized businesses to move to Memphis, they subsidized businesses to stay in Memphis. And at one point, they decided that what they really needed in order to be a world-class, successful city was an NBA basketball team playing in a pyramid-shaped stadium down on the Mississippi River. So they went out and they built a stadium and they went looking for a team. Now, for those of you that don't follow basketball, the Memphis Grizzlies, the Memphis was able to relocate from Vancouver, the NBA team, the Grizzlies, the problem is, when they got to town, they didn't like the stadium. So the city wound up building them a new stadium a few blocks away. This one sat empty for 15 years. After 200-plus million dollars of state and local subsidy, they were able to transform this building, and last year, it opened in May, not 13 months ago, it opened as the world's biggest Bass Pro shop. Orderly but dumb. Let me show you chaotic but smart. This is also in Memphis, Tennessee. There's a little street called Broad Avenue. Broad Avenue used to be a streetcar stop. A streetcar would stop there, there was a couple blocks of shops surrounding neighborhoods. In the 50s, the city tore out the streetcar lines, they ran a highway through this middle of this neighborhood without the streetcar stop, without the ability of people to walk, these places just died. Some neighbors, fed up with the decline, fed up with the neglect, took matters into their own hands. They went out, they worked with the proprietors, get the stores swept out, they swept up the sidewalks, they painted their own bike lanes, they painted their own crosswalks. They invited businesses for one weekend to come in and open up and just show people what this could be like. They had a bike shop and a couple art galleries and a taco stand and an ice cream place, and they just invited people to come in and open up. They didn't go ask for permission from the city, they didn't ask for Department of Health inspections, right? They figured, by the time anybody gets cranky with us, we're gonna be gone anyway, let's just go out and do this, and they made like a weekend party of it. And this is not the greatest block in the world, right? It's a heck of a lot better than what was there before. I wasn't here for this project, but I was out here six months later. When I was out six months later, every single storefront was occupied by a full rent-paying business. I talked to one of the landlords, one of the buildings, and he said he was able to rent the place for twice what they were asking for before this project. The city has since gone out, documented, I'll get these numbers right, 15 new businesses, 32 new jobs, $12 million of property value appreciation. From a total public investment of what? Zero. That's chaotic but smart. Now, I don't know what your city would do, I don't know, I don't know the policy here if you guys went out and started doing things like this, right? I can tell you what my city would do. My city would be out Monday morning with the power washers, right? You'd have, you know, this is not up to the manual for uniform traffic control devices. The attorney would be out there saying, you know, "That doesn't meet our standards, someone could get killed, we're liable," and they would, you know, have no tolerance for this, they'd get rid of it. Then they'd probably send the police chief over to give me a ticket, right? But the city of Memphis is desperate, and their desperation has made them really smart. And so what did they do? They went out and got rid of this, right? But only after they had a plan to put it back permanently. You see, the city of Memphis is desperate, and their desperation has made them really smart. They realized that they could have all the public hearings, all the visioning sessions, all the, you know, sticker charts on the wall, and they never would have identified this as the high-returning investment. But their residents did. And now their job becomes to never let it go back. Never let it go back. That's a much easier job, right? We were so inspired by the Memphis story that in my hometown, we took that neighborhood with the Taco Johns and the Old and Blighted Block, we spent a whole year out there working, trying to identify things that could be done to make people's lives better. We went out and saw where cars were driving too fast next to the school, we did a little speed study, we went out a week later and painted narrower lanes, did a speed study again, saw that it dramatically lowered the speed of cars. We put in temporary crosswalks, we talked to people in the neighborhood, just followed them around and watched where they struggled. We saw the mother walking through the ditch, weeds up to her waist, pushing a stroller, "What are you doing?" "Well, I have to get to the grocery store, I don't have a car today, it's not safe to walk on the street, so I'm walking here in the ditch." Saw the elderly woman walking in this middle of the street with a walker, climbing over mounds of snow, "What are you doing?" "I have to get to the pharmacy, I don't have a choice, there's no sidewalk here and the sidewalk back there isn't shoveled, so I'm walking here in the middle of the street." We documented all these and we put together at the end of the year this report called Neighborhoods First. It identified eight projects the city could do to make the neighborhood a little bit better place. Little things like, you know, put in a crosswalk here, plant a row of trees over here. My city is currently in the process of spending $14 million running sewer and water two miles out of town to build a second industrial park, this one out at the airport. Our existing industrial park is not full, but this one would be oriented towards the airport, which is gonna have some magic power to it. $14 million. The total cost of our eight projects? $16,700. It's nothing. What happens if we go out and we spend $16,700 in this neighborhood and nothing happens? Nobody's lives are made any better? Nobody looks at this neighborhood and said, "Wow, this is getting to be a nice place, I'd like to move here, I'd like to buy a property here, I'd like to invest..." The property values don't go up at all, nothing changes. What then? Well, we're out $16,700, we learned eight things that don't work, next year, we go try another eight things, right? These are small investments over a broad area, over a long period of time. I do think though, however, that we've kind of figured out some of the things that will work. I mean, I went to the city engineer, I said, "I think you could use a sidewalk here." Yeah. The response was, "Why would you say that, Chuck?" We have been for so long obsessed with chasing the dollar out on the edge of town that we have completely overlooked the pennies, the nickels, and the dimes that are just waiting in our core neighborhoods to be picked up. This city is a prime example, this is such a, I came into town, this is such a beautiful city, there's so many things going right here, there's so many things that are positive about your downtown, about the surrounding neighborhoods, this place is just dripping with opportunity. We just have to look at it differently. And as we're walking around tonight, we were kind of talking about opportunities, and we were talking about them in a big sense, and we saw someone go by on a bike, and I said, "Who's that guy? Follow him, figure out what he's doing, respond to his needs, that's the person, right?" And then someone else came out of a building, started walking down the street, I said, "Who's that? Go follow that person, watch where they struggle." If we can address that, we'll make life a little bit better, right? And then it'll feed on itself, and feed on itself, and it feed on itself. We do not need big projects. We need thousands of little projects. Our cities just need love, block by block by block. And if we humble ourselves to ask, "Where are our people struggling? And what is the next smallest thing we can do to address that struggle?", not only will we be building wealth, not only will we be making the highest-returning investments that we can possibly make, but we won't help but make people's lives better in the process. Thank you so much. So I don't know how much time we have left.
About nine minutes.
Okay. I would like to say two quick things about your city, and then if we can, I'd be happy to have any conversation that you guys want. I was very confused when I came into town by the one-way street, because I was in the right lane, and then I realized that, oh my gosh, we're all going in the same direction. Because it's such a beautifully scaled street, like it's just the right width, the parking is just the The parking is just the right width. The street is, everything about it is really, it's perfect, except it's one direction. In your downtown, I walked around with a radar gun and people are driving just way too fast. This, the, the signals slow it down, but in that orderly but dumb kind of way. Uh, what you really want is a chaotic but smart downtown, where traffic flows but flows at a very friendly speed. When the lights are green and people are coming through town, it's way too fast. And I had a radar gun and it was so, it was really bad. This is an easy fix. This is an easy, easy fix. I also just think that, um, when we look at the city, i- if you ask the question, where are the people? Where, where are people? And when you find the people, say, how do we get them here to this critical mass? Your downtown is already really nice. It, all it lacks is people. You just need to get people there. And I know there's some living options. I know there's some living options going in. Uh, but literally, we would see like flashes of a person like riding by on a bike or walking over here. Like where are, just get them. Just collect them and bring them here. Make it easy for them to get here because there's so much great stuff going on. I'm really enthused about Watertown and I'm happy to talk about anything that, that you guys would want to chat about.
Well, I don't know, uh, uh, guys, if you have some questions, um, I know that, that the council meeting starts in just a few minutes here. If you have something, we, we do appreciate you being here tonight. Very informative. Anything you guys want to throw out there? Otherwise, we gotta really get going too.
Chuck, I have a question for you. You, you said get the people here. What, what would you suggest? How do we go about that?
Um, I, I, I think we have to get down to their scale. So, you have to actually get out and walk the street. And what we did in that neighborhood in North Brainerd was, we, we literally just walked the street and saw where people were struggling. A lot of times, people will be trying to walk someplace and they can't. Try to fix that. Ask, what is the, the smallest investment we can make to make this a little bit easier? One of the things that we've talked specifically about, uh, your intersections are very wide and open, even though they have signals and you want cars to drive really slow. They're kind of scaled as if like they're a highway. It would be really easy in a very short term with paint. And if you want to get a little bit more aggressive with bollards, or if you wanted to back up a little bit, just do it with cones to actually bring the human space out a little bit and crowd that intersection a tiny bit, uh, so that the traffic would slow down and there would be less distance to cross. I think if you did that, uh, throughout the downtown, just, you do it just temporarily, I think you would see people show up.
I think what is interesting though, Chuck, is that if you look at the uptown or the downtown, I'm sorry, if you look at that, you know, i- it seems like something new is going in all the time. You know, you got the Harrys, you got the Brewery Company, you got the sushi place, you've got, uh, Mary Redlin is, is rebuilding hers, putting a new face on that. Seems like they feed upon themselves though, and we're seeing this.
They do.
You know, there, there's numerous, Dave Johnson has, uh, uh, reading on the corner over there. The Goss is redoing theirs. There's, uh, DDR Books is going, there's a lot of good things going on down there. I gotta give them that.
You can see it. You can see it.
And you can feel it. You can feel it down there when you go down there.
I think the, I think the, the, the thing that we can do as, as a public body, or we can do as, as citizens is, uh, downtowns are all about connections. And they're not connections, oftentimes we think in terms of parking spaces and parking lots, but the actual connections that make a downtown accelerate are human-scale connections. So how do we get across the street easier? That is worth spending a lot of time thinking about and experimenting with different approaches, uh, because that is a connection that will really pay back a lot.
I think a little bit of the stuff that we've listened to the people downtown and learned from and made some changes have been very successful. Uh, we used to have a two-hour parking limit.
Yeah.
We eliminated that. I mean, I heard that from a lot of people is, why would I want to go downtown shopping? I gotta move my car every two hours. And also eliminated overnight parking. Or, you know, before we didn't, didn't allow it. And now we want people to reside downtown, so we've
Yeah.
created a little more friendly atmosphere.
And I think those things make a lot of sense for where you're at today. I do think the goal of your downtown should be to have, uh, the, 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 the parking goal of a downtown is to have so many people want to be downtown that you can actually charge a lot for parking. That, then you're successful. Right now, you have way too much parking and so by having two-hour limits is an artificial silly thing. You actually need bodies and people, but if you're successful, you will reach a point where, uh, the, the, the cars become, the cars that are just staying there become an impediment. And then you might have to bring back the two-hour minimum during the day, leave the overnight. Then you might have to transition out of that to some type of paid. Ultimately, you should get to the point where, uh, there's so much going on in the downtown that you can live there without a car. Uh, or, you know, the, the, the parking is, you can charge for it and people will still come there because the downtown's so great. And that's a, you know, our, our reaction to parking is to build more. What we should be building more of is more places that people want to be. I saw the parks you built in between the buildings. They're, they're very nice. But, uh, is, is a long-term success, you need to look at those as temporary.
Yeah, and I think that actually went back into the seventies where, uh, there was a time when we just felt as though we needed to tear that building down.
Right.
You know, rather than put any money into it.
Everybody did that. Yeah.
Yeah, we did that.
But those are the places that need to start as your Jimmy's Pizza and, and build up from there.
I think that one building you had on there looked like the old Chamber Building, wasn't it? I think it really was, Megan. I think that was yours. Thanks, Charles. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting and then, uh, you guys got two minutes. Okay, I think we're gonna get going here, folks. Um, I'd like to welcome you all to the city council meeting, the Monday, June twentieth of two thousand and sixteen. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and we will do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Shelley, would you like to do roll call for us?
Absolutely. Elbertson.
Here.
Bueller. Bueller. Danforth.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Riefenberger.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Billhauer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. This time I will look for a motion of second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by John, second by, who was it down here?
Bueller.
Bueller? Bueller?
Bueller.
Okay, uh, any questions, concerns?
Uh, I, I'm, Shelley, I've got a question for you on one C. Are you okay with that?
Yes, it was just one that got turned in late.
Okay.
So.
Hey, Dan, before you leave, come on back here. I thought, where, I thought, where in the heck did Dangle? He's like slipping out of here. We want to ask you, we want to ask you a question on, on, uh, C here. Come on up to the microphone. If you are, grab that one. You can sit right there, whatever you want to do, Dan. We're just wondering, uh, any detail on the, on the BZ Sandlin welding for work completed at the zoo for eighteen thousand, three sixty, three thirty? What was that work?
That was a camel fence. Replacing the camel fence. That was approved on last year's CIP.
Okay, yeah, we were just kind of curious. Camel fence.
Camel fence.
Mike likes camels. Mike like, he likes camels.
Get out of here without a camel.
Yeah. Yeah, we like camels. All right. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, approval of the agenda. What I would like to do is we will pull number five off of the agenda, so I'd like an approval on that.
Second.
By Bruce, second by Glenn. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we will pull that off the agenda. Number three, renewal of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Mario Santos Guzman doing business as San Miguel Restaurante at seven fifteen Ninth Avenue Southeast for the period of July one, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wants to speak in favor of or against this, your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I will look for a motion of second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Don. Any questions?
Why is this one coming by itself?
Well, what happened was is that we, we kept bugging them, telling them they had to get it in, get it in, get it in, and the time limit is coming up and it just kind of came back.
I don't remember seeing this on a list of ones that were
Not correct.
Ticked it or something, right?
No, basically it's just after the timeline state statute allows them to not have a public hearing, but it's past the time that the state wanted them back. So now they have to have a public hearing for any, any renewal. So no, there wasn't any issues. Just late.
Right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four, vacation of a portion of public right-ofway adjacent to South Lake Drive, resolution number sixteen dash twenty-two. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Shane, would you have some comments of this for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um, can you put my screen up? We have been, um, a little bit, uh, still completing our research to perfect the actual vacation because we've checked into it. The requested vacation of eighteen feet is not going to work over this entire district. The roadway is not centered in the right-ofway that we have. And so that pushes some of the utilities, all of the utilities are located on the north side of the road along the prob, private property. Uh, several of the houses and gar, auxiliary garages and stuff encroach or cross the property line into public right-ofway. So I can't uniformly adjust the property lines acco, according to the existing roadway location, utility locations and the structures. So I have gotten some more surveying data gathered Friday and today to fine-tune a map that will tell us how much of this we can vacate safely without either leaving utilities on private property or having private property on public right-ofway. So we, we didn't have a chance to get this clarified at the last, um, planning commission meeting, but because of the publication deadlines, we had to get this notice for this public hearing published. And then we, so we decided to receive the, any public comments, which now we don't have. But anyway, I'm gonna perfect the drawing and the area to be vacated. We'll review that at the planning commission this Thursday at our regular meeting. And we'll bring this issue back to you for, um, a final decision at the July fifth meeting. So I would like to ask the council to, uh, delay a decision on this, uh, item until the July fifth meeting.
So what you're asking for is a motion that will defer this action, uh, until further notice. Am I correct, Don?
No, until the July fifth meeting.
Until the July fifth. So we'll defer that and at that time, we can ask all the questions we want about why we're, why we're doing this and what's happening, what the value of this right-ofway is and such.
Correct.
I would amend my motion to read that we bring this forward on July sixteen. Is that what you said? Fifth. Fifth. Okay.
What was that, Mike?
So we will not have any discussion on this then?
No, there's really no need to because it has to go in front of the planning commission. Uh, it, it didn't really have time to go through there and it came up to us. They looked at it, uh,
Well.
a little bit, but you're not ready for that.
Right. We didn't make it. It was tabled at the planning commission because we had some questions that we couldn't answer.
I, I would, I would really recommend that if, uh, if, if any of you are concerned on this, the planning commission, there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this. I would, uh, I would welcome you to be there and ask those questions.
What's the date and the time that that will occur?
It's this Thursday's meeting.
And it's at four fifteen?
Four fifteen it starts, yeah.
Right. I think that'd be very good discussion for us at that time.
Shane, can I just clarify?
We will have open, open, uh, conversation at the next meeting too.
All right. I, I just, one quick question. I, I did ask Don, I think I know the answer to this, but this, this property question is owned currently by those landowners? All of that property? We got a, we got signed petition by all fifteen owners along this stretch.
But the property is owned by the city because of the right-ofway.
The, the right-ofway
Is owned by the
is owned by the city, correct.
That's correct. And there's already numerous pieces of property that, I mean, buildings and such in the right-ofway.
Okay, what, what the real base problem or issue is, is that the original plots along the boundary of the lake were platted in nineteen oh eight. And the this level of surveying that laid out lots and build, and subsequent building on those, you know, nineteen oh eight, we didn't have a building services department that would go out and check and make sure where things were built and all that. And so a lot of those structures over the, those decades were built either too close to the right-ofway line or actually out on the public property. And so we're just trying to clean this up so that everybody that does work along that stretch doesn't have to come in for an automatic variance and things like that. So this is a good thing to clean up. Thank you.
You would probably find a lot of that all the way around the lake, wouldn't you?
On the older, developed portions of the lake, I would expect that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, I am one of the petitioners, so I'll recuse myself from this.
And I would say too that, you know, the building services nowadays, Kenny's Kenny's team upstairs is much better than nineteen oh eight.
Shane, is the only way to take care of this issue through abandonment? Or are there other options?
I mean, there's, there's, there may be other options, but the reality is, is that we have eighty feet, eighty-eight feet of right-ofway in this area that we don't need that much right-ofway. So we're, our intention is to pare this back down to a seventy-foot right-ofway, which is typical for a collector arterial street of this nature. And, and that's why the eighteen-foot dimension was grabbed right-ofway. But until, we, at the time, we didn't realize that the roadway wasn't centered in the, what right-ofway we had. So now I, I can't just carte blanche vacate eighteen feet. I have to review and make sure that I leave the utilities and the roadway in the right-ofway and give up what I can along that north boundary.
I guess the question begs, and I know that's what's happening here, is, um, is that right-ofway worth some dollars to the city? Because frankly, we just bought a whole bunch of right-ofway up to the north of town here.
No, it's not really, it's gonna vary from a matter of, uh, maybe eight feet on some lots to four or less in some others. You'll, you'll get it back maybe a little bit on the property tax side of things, even, you know. If that impacts their taxes, I don't, I can't say, I guess.
Well, I think we'll, there'll be a lot of questions that come forward on this one that comes back to us. So I do have a motion by Randy, I believe, to defer this, defer this action. Was there a second? Second by Bruce. Any other quick questions? All right, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And you did recuse yourself. Don recused himself on this one. And number five, we pulled off. Number six, ordinance number sixteen eleven, amending section six point zero five zero one of the revised ordinance of the city of Watertown regarding veterans burial plots with Mount Hope Cemetery. Uh, this is a second reading. And I will need a motion and a second on this. Motion by Dan, second by Beth. Any quick questions on that? Or otherwise Shane, you can fill us in what's going on.
Okay, yeah, the second reading, uh, my, if my screen's on. Uh, the new ordinance describes all, everything in the blue box and adds to it everything that's in the green box. And the green box will account for or provide space for seventy-two additional burial plots for veterans that qualify, you know, for service through foreign wars and, and service, uh, for, in the armed services. And, uh, so we just, we had run out of space for the existing veterans plot. It has a, uh, an ordinance that establishes that within the Mount Hope Cemetery. So this ordinance just clearly, uh, amends the area available for the veterans plots. That's it.
Uh, this seems like a very outdated ordinance requirement. And I know
And I know it's been a lot of years since we've had this, but if we're going to go through all the trouble to go through an ordinance change, why aren't we asking the question, is this even needed? This seems like a cemetery management issue, which is governed by under the parking rec and their recommendations, versus allotting space as the ordinance says, why are we not eliminating the requirement that it come to this body? It's the same amount of work, but what makes the most sense? I'd rather fix something that's outdated than carte blanche keep going with what we're doing. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
I do think, Mike, that what we are doing is we're going to be looking at all the ordinances and going through these and see which ones are outdated and such, rather than just pick one here and there. I think we need to really look at our ordinances.
And this is just an assumption or a managerial thing that I think maybe is part of the reason, is these veteran plots are provided free of charge to people that qualify for those plots. Everything else out in that cemetery is a plot that's sold off to the general public. And I think somebody probably was expected that they didn't want to sell off all the plots and not leave anything for the veterans that could get a free plot. So by ordinance, somebody in the history, long history of Watertown has decided that an ordinance was the best way to protect those plots. It'd be my best explanation.
Okay. And I do think, you guys, just so you know, we will be looking at these ordinance because there are numerous things on the books that probably should be taken off. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no other questions, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, first reading of ordinance Number 1610, amending the zoning district boundaries by rezoning property from PUD-planned unit development, single-family attached residential district, and I-1 light industrial to A-1 agricultural district. Just so y'all know, this is in the... This is the Lyons Park area. So I'll let you... Go ahead, Shane, if you want to explain what's going on here.
Yeah. The city staff had got an inquiry about doing some improvements in the park, which would typically include a billing permit or something that would require permits. And when we were... Staff was reviewing it. If you see the little area in the far lower right corners, kind of a purplish tinged area, and then the larger green-hatched area. The green-hatched is PUD. That purplish area is an industrial I-1 lot. And the yellowish ones along Compeska Boulevard are the residential R-2. All of those properties are currently used for city park. So what we wanted to do was clean up the zoning so that all of it reflected the same uses and opportunities for the rest of the city parks in the region. The zoo, the parks to the south, the parks to the north are all zone agricultural. So we're proposing to rezone this area agricultural to be consistent.
Can I ask my question? Shane, what's the gaps in the lighter green?
Over to... In this, off of Compeska, that is a vacated Fifth Avenue right-of-way.
Okay, so there's like, there's three of them there. There's all... One's a lot, two are roads or something.
One is the vacated Fifth, and the other two are vacated alleys.
Any other questions about this? This is first reading, but you're more than welcome to ask him.
So we take that vacated area and...
It's already public, so it carries the... Vacated areas cover... Carry the same zoning as the adjacent properties.
Is that residential lots? Are those in the floodplain?
Well, they're all on the riverside of the earth dyke that was built along Compeska Boulevard. So they've been taken out of public service for a long time.
Shane, the planning commission looked at this at their last meeting, did they not?
Yes, they did, and they recommended the zoning change.
I'm thinking, it seems like years ago, Dr. Longworth or somebody brought something to plan something.
They were going to build condos or something out there. I recall that. Okay, we will move on. Make sure I'm on the right one. Number eight, consideration of amendment to the development agreement for the Compeska Dunes Second Edition. And what I will do is I'll look for a motion and a second. Got a motion by Beth, second by John. And then Shane, you want to give us some insight on this one?
Okay, back in 2002, I'd like to say, was... Or in the recent past, anyway, this area was subdivided as Compeska Dunes Edition. With that, the development agreement that was in your packet had a number of items which were included in the development. One of the items that was... A portion of that development agreement is the lot that you see in blue on the screen is a stormwater detention pond. And part of the development agreement also included the construction of sidewalk along the north, another... The 12th Avenue side, and also on the east along Thirty-third Street. The owner of the development or the developer is now asking if he can forego the installation of sidewalk along the Thirty-third Street side of the property. He is intending on putting the sidewalk across the northern portion along 12th Avenue. Since the council previously adopted the development agreement, and that's what we have signed a contract, I didn't feel that staff could forego anything for requirements regarding this lot. The lot has not yet been deeded over to the city for maintenance or operation. I expect that at some point in the near future, they will request that the city take it over. And city staff will follow through with all the requirements of the... Either the original development agreement or the amended one based on your decision here tonight. So just to recap, what they're asking for is to not have to install the sidewalk along Thirty-third Street as part of... Per their original agreement.
I just kind of wanted to mention that originally, when they were doing this development, they brought it to the city, and they had that retention. The city then was requiring them to put sidewalk all the way around on four corners. And they did then come back and worked out an agreement that they would have it on the north and the east. Since that time, we've put in the bike trail on the east side, which is used for the entire area. So that's kind of why they're asking us to forego this east side sidewalk at this time.
When we say forego, are we talking about removal of it as a requirement or a pushing out of the requirement?
I think Shane was actually asking at the time that you would push it out, that it could be done. They're going to deed this over to the city. I know they brought that information to us a long time ago. They are going to deed it over, but within that acceptance of the deed, we need to make sure whether we say, okay, if there's property on the south of that, do we need the sidewalk on that east side? So I think you still might want to keep it still in your arsenal, but kind of back off for now.
Mayor, would this be an opportunity for a right of waiver to protest? You know, if there were future development, then we're covered. If we feel that we need to have that sidewalk installed, we'd have that opportunity.
Yeah, I guess I didn't think of that as an option because that's not a buildable lot. We use those waiver rights to protest on buildable lots when something isn't put in right-of-way that's expected.
So if this develops to the south, if this would further develop, which I would assume eventually it will...
Right, that's...
We have to make a decision on whether or not we want to go with the bike trail. It's going to be sufficient for our needs there, or whether or not somebody else, if we did decide to do that... Who would... Say we had a sidewalk on that side, who then would be responsible for the sidewalk continuation along that... If we didn't do that, along that water retention area?
The next developer that would develop to the south would be responsible for bringing sidewalk up to the edge of this lot. And then this lot would be either...
No, I'm talking about that lot. Who would be responsible for that from there to the...
Well, if the city got it deeded over to us, it would be our responsibility to complete the sidewalk grid. If... So the question is, do we want to take on that responsibility by accepting a deed without a sidewalk? Or the options, as I see it, we could either take money in lieu of a sidewalk now so that we can afford to build it later, or they could build out the sidewalk as per their original agreement, deed over the lot to the city, and then it's done. The only thing I don't like about that is, is you have a sidewalk that's going to receive little if any, maintenance for the next umpteen years until that develops, and then that sidewalk might not be in that good a shape by the time people want to use it and need it.
I certainly wouldn't ever think about building the sidewalk now. I'm just saying...
No, right.
With a waiver of right to protest. If they originally agreed that they would build that sidewalk, if that's the case, then I don't have to worry about anything if it ever develops. But if it does, then they would have to... Otherwise, the city's going to be on the hook for that junk of sidewalk.
Yeah. And my only caution in that is there's an undefined timeline for that. When's it going to happen? Is anybody going to remember it? How would we...
I sure hope so because we got a whole bunch of them, Shane.
Well...
We better be looking at those and remembering them, you know. I think if we do that, we... You know, that needs to be revisited.
I think what Shane's saying is the trigger for that is when somebody goes to get a permit to build, which is never going to happen here, so there's... We're lacking a trigger to instigate that if you...
That would probably be the trigger if it was going to be developed.
Right.
Well, it doesn't mean we have to take that land.
No, if we didn't accept the deed, he would have it forever.
Yeah. You wouldn't have to keep it.
Is there any...
We wouldn't have to accept it, is what I'm saying.
Is there any sidewalk north of there now? I don't... Doesn't look like it by that. I...
I'll jump over to a different mechanism here.
I believe they have a service road that...
No, there is no sign on.
No. So they got the private service road.
Yeah. The development to the north does have a service road that is intended to serve both for vehicles and pedestrians. They don't have a designated area painted on there, but that was what... When they developed that portion, that was supposed to be useful both as pedestrian and traffic to get into your driveway.
Can we not just leave it as is, give the guy the waiver for now for the sidewalk on the east side, having to put it on the north side, not accept the property as of yet?
That's... Yeah. We wouldn't even need a waiver at the time. If we don't take it over, if we don't need a waiver, we can just delay putting in the other piece of sidewalk.
That's what I was...
Seems like the logical thing to do.
Okay. Fair enough for me.
So do you need anything? I think we had a motion and a second. We had a motion by...
If that is the path we take, there's no motion needed because I'll just hold this... We just won't accept the deed for this property. We'll let him install the sidewalk along 12th. And then when such time that he wants to deed it over to us, if he wants to put the sidewalk along Thirty-third Street, then it's done. We take it over.
Really will come into play if there's building on the south of him, if there's a couple of lots sold. You're going to want to have sidewalk over there, and it'll be a really nice place.
It's just about timing.
Are you sure we don't have to pull this motion and a second off? Somehow, we've got that on the table.
Remember what was the motion?
The motion and the second was to amend. So why don't you just vote on whether you're going to amend it or not amend it? So you're going to say yes if you want to amend the motion, no if you don't.
Okay. So you guys all got it? All right. So I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed. Okay. Thanks, Shane. Number nine, consideration of change order Number 1 to the contract with Bates Construction Company Incorporated for the Watertown Regional Landfill Cell Number 6. Construction project increasing the contract amount by $3,000. And what I'll do is I'll look for a motion and a second for... Got a motion by Mike, second by Don. Shane, you want to give us a little heads up on this?
Okay, yeah. This is one of those unique projects. It's been an ongoing cycle of construction out at the landfill. And what the reason this change order creeped in so early in this project because it's only a couple of weeks into construction was when the design work was done off of survey that was done several years ago. And in that timeframe, a lot of volunteer trees have grown up along an area that where we were building a new road through. And of course, none of the survey data would reflect those new volunteer trees in that period of time. So it was identified almost immediately upon the contractor arriving and starting earthwork that the trees were going to be a nuisance. A lot of them were... Many of them were three inches in diameter, which is a little bit larger than a standard, you know, earth removal type situation. So our engineer negotiated a clearing grub price of $3,000 to take care of about a two-acre area of volunteer trees. And we felt that that was reasonable, and it was fair to the contractor because he had to deal with a little bit extra work. So with that, the project engineer and city staff both recommend approval of the change order.
Shane, I'm just going to ask a question. Is there any opportunity if the public wanted to take some of those out, if they wanted those trees, or would it be more of a hassle than it's worth?
It's a lot of hassle.
I mean, I know if they get pretty big, you got to spade them out, but I mean, would there be an opportunity for the public?
They really aren't worth anything. They're volunteer cottonwoods and willows.
Say no more.
I would take two dozen of them, Shane.
So that's all I have.
You surprised me. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any old business we want to discuss?
Yes, Mayor, I have one issue. That is the sign ordinance committee. My understanding is that the First District folks are done with their plan, at least the first iteration of that plan. And I have heard nothing about any kind of a meeting so that we could discuss that. I think we're going to have sort of an abbreviated crowd to look at this thing at first glance and then make recommendations from there. And I haven't heard anything yet. So I'd like to see that move along.
Yeah, we have on purpose kept you out of the loop on that, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
No. Well, Shane, you must have an answer for that.
I'm running for mayor, by the way, so... Just kidding, just kidding.
I do have some information, and it's kind of a snowball effect kind of thing. I mean, it started out with a little snowball and it's gotten bigger. But basically, what happened was First District was hired to help us draft the revisions to the sign ordinance. And about that time is when I lost my staff member that was my urban planner. And so the same person that was designated to do the sign ordinance became my temporary urban planner and has been working for the city, helping us maintain the planning commission items going forward. So that delayed him in finishing that sign ordinance. I believe he's now got it done, a rough draft, and ready to convene that group to review that. And I think you'd see a meeting coming fairly soon.
Can you kind of give me a sort of an idea of the timeframe there?
Not tonight. I would assume... We can have this as a discussion item in our normal staff meeting tomorrow and probably identify that.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds good. Any other?
Mayor, did you want to mention that a group did get together and discuss the parking out at the lake scenario? And a lot of ideas were kicked around, and that will be kind of formalized and looked at as far as what the possibilities are?
Yeah, it actually turned out really well. We had a group get together on lake ordinance parking. It's very, very similar to regular uptown Watertown, you know, the whole city proper. It went very well. There wasn't a lot of disagreement on what we're seeing. We realized, you know, the front yard's the backyard, and the backyard's the front yard. So we took that into consideration, but I think it went really quite smooth. We're going to have to have a couple more meetings on that, and I think we'll be bringing something together very shortly.
I'll agree. I thought, quite honestly, at least that phase went much smoother with less obstacles once we really looked at it than what I anticipated. So I think it'll be positive for the most part, I believe.
I said, Bruce, you weren't there, were you?
In spirit, I was there. In spirit. I was there, Mayor. I, I had another engagement I had to attend, but I assure you, I want to be at the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Any liaison member reports? I do have a reason to go into executive session. I don't expect any action out of this, and it should not take very long. So at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second to go into executive. It is for contract negotiations and issues, issues in building permits and things like that. So I had a motion by Randy, second by Mike. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There's going to be anything we come out to decide on, and you expect?
There will not be.